I had the wrong link.
Okay, we've got a quorum.
Look at Gary all dressed up.
I know, can you believe that?
No.
With the tie.
I figured I'd change it up today just for the heck of it.
I see Sheldon's here, he's under participants, so I'll just go ahead and call the February 23rd Board of Education meeting to order. Do we have any comments from the public on closed session items? Is the chat open? Let me give people time. Okay, I am going to adjourn us to close session and we will be back out at 6 o'clock. Give Sheldon a little. Okay, are we all here? Is Ellen here? All right, so we are reconvening the February 23rd Board of Education meeting. Before we get started, I actually want to acknowledge the grim milestone that our country reached yesterday of 500,000 lives lost to the coronavirus. Just wanted to acknowledge, I don't know if anyone wanted to say anything as well. Okay, all right, so let's move on to adoption and approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I moved to adopt the agenda.
My second.
All in favor? Okay, so first up, special recognitions, reports and presentations, 6.1 school discipline, school jurisdiction and the First Amendment.
Thank you. We are honored to invite Jan Tomsky from Fagan Friedman in Full Frost to come and do a presentation for us at the request of the board on myriad of issues related to First Amendment, school discipline, and jurisdiction. Jan is one of the leading experts in this particular legal field in all of California. So don't want to set the bar too high for you, Jan, but really do appreciate you coming. It's a complicated issue, there's a lot of gray, gray areas, she'll go through that and feel free to ask questions. And we're going to give this its due diligence. Hopefully, the board will be able to really gather some good information tonight.
That is fantastic, and thank you for those very kind and somewhat intimidating words. Let me see if I can share my screen and bring the presentation up. I think I can. Oops. Other than the fact that I went ahead a little bit. Does that work for all of you? Can you see it?
Yes.
Well, the first miracle of the night, so thank you, I've just of late forced myself to decide that I can share screens and work that through as well. So thank you, it's absolutely a privilege. I see actually some faces there in Pedalum City Schools whom I know or have had some experience with in other districts. It's wonderful to see you all again, and thank you Governing Board for this opportunity to have this conversation, or at least start the conversation. The topic of student discipline and free speech in the public schools, student constitutional rights, is really a huge topic in any particular area that that I'm going to talk about tonight. I could probably do a couple hours just on those singular topics. So my goal tonight is really not to go into depth on cases or analyses, but what I really want to do, my hope in leaving you tonight, is to have provided a framework on these issues, a framework regarding where the law is, where the cases are, and things that both governing boards and site administrators and administrators in the district need to be thinking about when contemplating issues related to student discipline and free speech. I know it seems a little heady to have created the title that says constitutional protections. Are we going to really just discuss the Constitution tonight? But the reality is, because a school, because a school district is an arm effectively of the government, we are in many ways the government, the analysis with respect to constitutional protections applies to school districts. That has actually only been clearly true for the last 52 years. But a famous case, and we're going to talk about this case just a little later in a little more depth when we talk specifically about issues that arise when looking at discipline of a student related to that student's speech. But Tinker is a case that arose in Des Moines in the 60s, and it was the first case that presented the United States Supreme Court with a very interesting, very new question. Until that time, we had always assumed that students come into the public schools, administrators, teachers effectively stand as their parents, able to discipline them as they wish and manage the school process in whatever way worked for the school. But this case was the first one that actually overtly asked the question, will the students have any rights related to their constitutional rights as students in the public schools? Can a school district trample on those rights, ignore those rights, or do students actually carry them with them? And until that time, it was believed that students had no constitutional rights in relation to their attendance in public schools, but the United States Supreme Court in 1969 overruled that and said, you know, and it's a famous saying, we all learn it, that students do not shed their constitutional rights at the school gate. There may be nuances to that, there may be analyses that we have to apply around the facts. But it's a, this was a significant case. Because subsequent to that, we've got a lot of litigation around whether an action on the part of a school district has deprived a student of their right to free speech, of their right to be free of unlawful search and seizure in relation to taking student property. We have seen a lot of litigation since Tinker, but I want to start kind of with the fundamental issue of student discipline. Because this issue comes up all the time. And, and let's talk for a moment about where that fits in relation to the constitutional framework. So Tinker opened the door, Tinker said students do not shed their constitutional rights at the schoolhouse gate, and it wasn't very long before another case found its way to the Supreme Court specific to, well, what about student discipline? Are you really telling us that students have a constitutional right to be protected from discipline in the public schools? Was a case that went up just about six years after Tinker called Goss v. Lopez. It started as many things did in the mid 70s, as a food fight in a school cafeteria, but it quickly escalated. This was a, this was a school in which there were significant racial tensions. Again, we're in the 60s, moving into the 70s, and the fight in the cafeteria escalated. Site principal came down, pointed at nine young men and said, you're out, you're suspended for 10 days. One of those young men was Dwight Lopez, and that case went all the way supported by the HCL, United States Supreme Court, same way. Students have a constitutional right to be in school, you can't just point to the door and send them out, that cannot be right. And the Supreme Court struggled to find, well, what right are we actually protecting? There are three fundamental rights, life, liberty and the pursuit of, and property. Pursuit of happiness surely, but the right to life, liberty and property. And ultimately, the Supreme Court said education is a property interest for students, and you cannot deprive it without due process. This case came up in 1975, and all of California law flowed from that case. A year later, we wrote California statutes related to the due process procedures that apply to students when they're facing formal discipline, either suspension or expulsion from the district. What Goss v. Lopez said, and what the California Ed Code requires, is that the longer the potential exclusion from school, a suspension versus a long-term expulsion, then the due process rights have to increase and the student is entitled to greater protections. Of course, there are a number of other constitutional protections we, we need to keep in mind. California Constitution says, yeah, but what about the fact that students and staff in the public schools have a right to attend campuses that are safe, secure and peaceful? That's the obligation school districts have. Boards of, Boards of Education, let's ensure that our campuses are safe, secure and peaceful. So there's kind of a trade-off between those two, as we see laid out in California Education Code, Sections 48, 900 to 2.25. Generally, they track Goss v. Lopez, which isn't to say students can find themselves immune constitutionally from discipline, but due process protections and certain requirements have to apply. The first is jurisdiction. I hope you can read that, but I guess you're looking at it on your screen, so I hope that you can. Jurisdiction is a fundamental question. And this means from the very beginning of student discipline law, going back, going way back to almost Goss v. Lopez, districts cannot discipline their students for everything they do, wherever they do it. And that's an important concept to bear in mind. The fundamental idea is that we have jurisdiction as a school district over behavior that is related to school activity or attendance. Now, the Ed Code lays out a number of examples, like on school rounds, going or coming to school, going or coming from a school activity, and there are those who think that that means it has to be one of those five things. Kind of ignore that, those are just examples. But the question a site administrator always has to ask is, that activity, did that have a relationship to school activity or attendance? Was there a fight that happened on Saturday night, but did it start with a promise in the school corridors that we were going to meet Saturday night and fight? Or is there a robbery at a local convenience store and it has nothing to do with school? We can't exercise jurisdiction over those issues. So the first question is jurisdiction, and the second is, the Education Code lays out just about 23 offenses. And if a student is to be disciplined, and I'm speaking suspension, which can be for up to 10 days in a given year, or expulsion, which can be for the most significant offenses a full year. Although we do provide alternative education when a student is expelled, there are just about 23 offenses. But we not only have to have jurisdiction, it has to be one of the enumerated offenses. We can't discipline a student if it's not on the list. And the Ed Code over time has added a few things for sure, sexual harassment, hate violence, threats intimidation and terroristic threats, and that came up for sure in the context of school shootings and other frightening events that were occurring around the country. But those are, those are the grounds for suspension or expulsion. Now remember, Goss v. Lopez, the Supreme Court said, you cannot deprive students of their time in school without due process. And the process that is due depends on how long you're going to remove the student from school. Consequently, the Education Code says we have requirements related to suspension and requirements related to an expulsion. For a suspension, and bear in mind that constitutionally, the notion of due process typically means notice and an opportunity to be heard. That in a nutshell is due process. And so the Education Code with respect to suspension, which is considered a much less serious exclusion, it can be again in any single event from one to five days. It has to be preceded by a conference with the student, the administrator needs to sit down with the student. The student is entitled to know what the reasons are for the suspension, and the student is entitled not to see documents or evidence, but to at least have an understanding what the evidence is. And then that student has to have a genuine opportunity to prevent, to present his version and talk it through with the administrator before suspension is imposed. There are also rights that parents have related to that. An administrator does need to make a reasonable effort to contact the parent or guardian at the time the student is suspended, and then a written notice needs to follow, and that notice needs to lay out the specific charges under the Education Code, which a student is charged. Sometimes a student is initially suspended, but the district moves for expulsion, and it's an interesting, it's an interesting issue, because over time, the legislature has kind of been a pendulum that has swung a couple of different ways. Some years ago, in the late 90s, as we were facing horrific and frightening events such as Columbine, the legislature kind of jumped into the lawn, said, hey, there are some offenses that are so significant. Administrator, you don't get to decide. Governing boards, you don't get to decide if a student is going to be expelled. If you find he did it, then you must expel. So there are some legislative requirements around this, but whenever a student is up for expulsion, he or she is entitled to an expulsion hearing. It could be in front of a panel, typically it's in front of a governing board, and it's a full-on evidentiary hearing. Both sides present evidence, both sides present witnesses typically making opening and closing statements. And I've seen expulsion hearings take longer than even one day, though typically they don't. And then the board takes action on whether to expel the student and provides the student ultimately with written information about how long the student is expelled for. Sometimes we can suspend enforcement of that, you're expelled, but you can return effectively on probation. A rehabilitation plan needs to be put into place, but an expulsion is a full-on hearing, after which if the governing board has heard it, the governing board goes into closed session, makes a decision and comes out and takes its vote in public. The decision's actually made in public. When I said that the legislature's pendulum is swinging, it's because they backed away from their position maybe 20 years ago of wanting to be hard on issues that might create unsafe school environments. Surely, no one wants that. But they've also, in the last 10 years, become more and more convinced that student discipline is not the way, typically best way to address issues that arise with students who engage in misconduct at school. That just by imposing discipline, we're missing opportunities to do positive interventions, to provide students with the support they need, to provide them opportunities for restorative justice, to provide them with opportunities to learn from their mistakes rather than solely to be punished by them. So consequently, in order to expel a student for almost every offense except the most significant ones, in order to, to move forward with expulsion, the district has to prove that other means of correction are either not feasible or have been tried, or the student is in absolute danger to himself or others based on what occurred that has led to the expulsion. But since, since, since about 2012, the legislature has enacted a number of statutes as a reminder to administrators that they mean this, and they take it very seriously. It was in 2012, I think, when we started to see a shift in legislation saying, hey, are you thinking about other means of correction? Have you imposed those? You need to be using alternatives that are age-appropriate and designed to address the behavior. AB 1729 provided us with a list of possible interventions. Conferences, referrals, restorative justice, assessment, positive behavior supports, tiered interventions. But the legislature was sending the message to schools that they were serious when they said, let's be looking at alternative means of supporting our students, alternative means of correction. And you cannot typically discipline a student for many offenses, not even suspend, unless you can demonstrate that you have used these other means of correction. Just last year, we saw another state of legislation related to this issue that continued focus on other means of correction. Administrators are encouraged to provide alternatives on a research-based framework with strategies that improve behavior and academic outcomes. Multi-cube systems of support, particularly the focus of the legislature there related to restorative justice, trauma-informed practices, SEL, the variety of approaches and interventions that the legislature is strongly encouraging schools to use in lieu of disciplines. I'm going to pull this all together, but I want to talk about student free speech for a moment. And I want to talk about it, it's a broad topic. We have student newspapers, a variety of issues. But I want to focus on how this fits in and has created even a whole new complicated set of analyses and cases where student free speech is the alleged misconduct. It will come as no surprise to you that in the last decade or two, but particularly the last 10 to 15 years, we have seen an explosion of cases related to social media, related to cyber misconduct, postings on social media, postings on websites, text, all kinds of electronic communications. And very often, these communications occur off-campus. And, and, and the issues became, have become very complex. Because then not only are the challenges, the pushbacks going to be, well, you, you know, you don't have jurisdiction, it happens off-campus, it wasn't related to school activity or attendance, and oh, you are also prohibited from disciplining the student for pure speech because he is protected under the First Amendment related to free speech. So we have seen even more complicated cases arising in what are these very complicated disciplinary situations where administrators are looking at conduct that appears to have taken place beyond school hours, outside of the school context. And now we have to be thinking both about students' property interests and about their First Amendment protection, so that we are taking actions consistent with students' constitutional rights. The issue here gets a little, a little more complicated. And remember when I said that generally to discipline a student, it must be related to school activity or attendance. That is still true in the free speech discipline cases. You see the bottom analysis, they call it a nexus to school activity. The top says true threats. If there is a true threat, it is not protected free speech ever. You all have heard the example of you can't yell fire in a crowded movie theater. And I say crowded movie theater with some nostalgia at this point, but true threats to school safety are not protected. But there's a heightened analysis related to that nexus to school activity if the issue is whether the student had a right to free speech. And that is, you not only have to have jurisdiction, but you have to be able to demonstrate that that speech was not only connected to school activity and attendance, but it either did or reasonably could have been expected to materially and substantially disrupt the school environment, which takes, you know, good, careful investigation and analysis, but it's going to be a fact-specific case, which is why we have cases all over the place. We know that the First Amendment protects freedom of speech. Like just about every constitutional protection, California has a heightened analysis of student free speech. And by the way, there are other provisions of the California Ed Code that make it very clear that it is the intent of the California Legislature that students are fully protected with respect to their free speech rights. You know, I'm talking about discipline, which is to say, students aren't fully protected, they have entitlements to due process, but they may be disciplined and they may be removed. There is the notion in California, particularly regarding student free press, that students have significant free speech, free speech rights. Yeah, so let's, let's kind of talk about Tinker one more time, because Tinker was the case in 1979 where the Supreme Court first said, hey, we think students are constitutionally protected in the public schools, despite the fact that it was not a popular viewpoint then. So I want to just remind you or tell you what happened in Tinker. Tinker involved 13-year-old Mary Beth Tinker. The case, she and her brother and a few other students wished to protest the Vietnam War. So they wore black armbands to school. The Governing Board, interestingly, in Des Moines, Iowa, heard that this is going to happen, convened at an emergency session and wrote a policy and enacted it that banned black armbands at school. So when these students came the next week wearing black armbands, they were suspended. Mary Beth and several other students, I think there were nine of them, and they were suspended from school. This case, as you know, went all the way up to the Supreme Court, and the question became, well, this was not only a discipline issue, but fundamentally, what they were engaging in was, was speech. Speech and protest of the Vietnam War, even though it wasn't words, they're wearing black armbands was an expression of their point of view related to the Vietnam War. The school was determined, it was determined that the school had violated their constitutional rights, that their free speech rights were protected, and why? Because the school district could not present any evidence that there was, or that they reasonably expected there to be a substantial disruption at school. There was some disruption, school officials felt quite disrupted. At least going through the process of suspending Mary Beth Tinker, her brother and several others, but generally, students went to class. The armband was very small, they didn't make a point of it, they simply passively wore them. And there were some hostile remarks, but there were no threats of violence, there wasn't a significant incident at school that could be connected to them wearing armbands. So it was determined that, that it wasn't causing a disruption. Now, the district did argue that they had, they, it was only because they nipped it in the bud. That's the only reason there wasn't a substantial disruption. And the Supreme Court said, your fear that that might be the case isn't enough. You have to have evidence that there was a reasonable chance there was going to be a significant disruption. Because students' free speech rights cannot be trampled on easily. And by the way, I think what really made it problematic for the Des Moines School District is they allowed other forms of expression, other insignia, expressing very different points of view, and they allowed that. They simply did not allow any expressions of protest related to the Vietnam War. And so this case up at the Supreme Court not only found that students don't shed their rights at the schoolhouse gate, but that they were, that they were entitled to significant protections. So again, I think I've said this, but where what we are looking at is disciplining. So you hear that a student said something off-campus or that there was a posting on social media at 9 o'clock at night. It has to be tied to school activity or attendance. And because it's, there's heightened protections that apply to student's speech, then we have to ask the question whether it was reasonably foreseeable that there would be a material or substantial disruption of school activity. So you can well imagine the cases that have gone up to the courts, and there are many, 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 many cases where students have had attorneys or organizations that have fought for their rights to be vindicated. This was, this is an interesting case. I wonder if you can imagine how it came out. It was a Beverly Hills case. Came up. And it involved a posting on YouTube. After school, a group, it's kind of a mean girl, a very mean girl sort of case. A group of girls went to a restaurant. They sat around. One girl filmed all the other girls and the other girls. Made disparaging comments about a girl, thirteen year old girl who was not there. They said things like she's a slut, she's ugly. Things that are very damaging to a fragile thirteen year old. Psyche and they knew it was, they knew it was very hurtful. The girl who took the video went home and posted it on YouTube. She also contacted other students and even told the victim, hey. You should see what what I posted. Go take a look. So it was posted on a public website. The content. Was very derogatory and the school ultimately suspended. The student who had filmed it and posted it. For a few days. And that case went up all the way to federal court. That this, the school's decision to suspend became a federal case. So what do you think? Does it appear? That there was jurisdiction? Was this connected to school activity or attendance? And if it was. Do you think that this was, there was a threat to substantially disrupting the school environment? Well, the court said that the school did have jurisdiction. It was related to school activity or attendance. It was girls talking about a girl at school. They posted it on a website. They contacted other students. It did. Become a topic of conversation at school the next day. Students were definitely spreading this around. It was viewed on a public site. But the determination was that that free speech was protected. Which is a very interesting analysis. But the reality is the notion that it has to cause a substantial disruption is a significant issue. The victim and her mom came. She was upset, but she went to class. It didn't appear to be rippling around the campus. There was no discussion in other classes. The district did say we were concerned, you know, that there might be gossiping or passing notes, that there wasn't enough of a disruption. But that students free speech, despite the fact that the district had jurisdiction for them to punish that student for the free speech. So the bottom line there is that a school district. Cannot discipline students unless the conduct is closely connected conduct at all or reasonably foreseeable. And will cause or did cause substantial disruption to school operations. So what? What I'm suggesting is, first of all, the issues that arise in the context of student discipline. And particularly discipline where the conduct is speech. Is in truth, very complicated. The subject of a great deal of litigation and the free speech cases have exploded in litigation in the last ten years for sure. It's incumbent then on every district and every governing board to be conscious of what those protections are. With respect to off-campus behavior. We cannot discipline students unless we can clearly connect that behavior. To a school activity or attendance. And if it is speech. And speech doesn't mean, you know, the spoken word speech can be something that's written. It can be a text. It can be a visual. It can be. A posting on a social media site. There are a lot of things that get that are. That are considered to be speech. But we have to be looking at a substantial disruption to the school based on that speech. So there are challenges, jurisdictional ones, constitutional ones. But that's, that's the framework. In which we do need to operate. I wanted to say. A couple more things, just a few additional thoughts in case these are issues for you because. One of the issues that I have dealt with a lot this year. And last year too, but it has really just more recently become a question as well. You know, what about student athletes? Lots of districts have codes of conduct. I have written a few this year. And the issue becomes, can we impose? More severe sanctions, different sanctions, sanctions on top of discipline. On student athletes because they're participating in a voluntary activity. They. Subject themselves and project themselves as being representatives of the school. Isn't there a higher standard? We should hold student athletes and perhaps everybody. Who participates in an extracurricular activity too. It interestingly was a case, an issue that did come before, again, United States Supreme Court. Not terribly long ago and about fifteen years ago in nineteen ninety-five. And at that time, it had to do with random drug testing. And it went up. On a claim that that violated student athletes' right to be free of unreasonable search and seizure under the Fourth Amendment. These are always constitutional challenges. And so the question went up to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court kind of set a tone. To say that student athletes, I quoted it there voluntarily subject themselves to a higher degree of regulation because they're participating in a voluntary activity. And they're expected to conduct themselves and conform themselves when they're representing their school to a higher standard. That was nineteen ninety-five. So we've seen a number of cases since then that have followed. That Supreme Court case, but they are, I have to tell you, kind of all over the map. And heavily litigated, heavily litigated across the country, but kind of split down the middle. So it's a very uncertain arena. We have cases where, for example, students, student athletes. Drink alcohol at a party off campus. Can they be disciplined for that? And even if they perhaps they can't be disciplined, perhaps there's no jurisdiction. Can they be subject to a code of conduct for that off-campus behavior? Well, those are subject to First Amendment challenges, saying I have the right to free assembly. You can't tell me where I can go on a weekend. The courts are split on that. What about drug testing? The courts are still split. On whether that's a violation of the Fourth Amendment. We've even seen cases under the Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection. To say, hey, I'm a student athlete. You wouldn't do this to a student who isn't a student athlete. They're not subject to a code of conduct. That enables you to take action, even if you haven't violated the Ed Code and even if you don't have jurisdiction. We've seen equal protection challenges. So I can't tell you exactly how cases will come out because right now we're in a universe where. You know, parents of student athletes will often. Feel very strongly about moving litigation forward. So we're seeing cases and they are, they are not consistent. Some cases do come up around teachers and and whether they have the right to free speech. Are they protected in the schoolhouse gate? Generally, I would say the only. Clear answer to that is teachers don't have free speech protections based on speech in the classroom. Outside of the classroom and on matters of public concern. The cases are are fact-based, looking at balancing that employee's interest with speaking out on matters of public concern. Versus the district's interest in managing the operations of its employees. And they come out in different ways depending on the factual scenario. So a couple of takeaway, I think I have said this. The fundamental jurisdictional question and remember again. Student discipline can only attach to. Behavior that specifically is enumerated in the education code that's connected to school activity. So everything that occurs. Off campus. Could be. Connected to school activity, but it may not be. And that's a challenging question very often. And for site administrators, typically we want. Pretty clear evidence that there is a connection to school activity or attendance in order to move forward. If the misconduct is speech, you have to consider the potential or actual disruption at school. So that I think was my. My broad up here in the sky overview. To just give you the framework in which. Site administrators and superintendents and other administrators and ultimately governing boards live. It's a complicated and has become a much more complicated area. Particularly with the rise of social media and what that has meant. And I, and I will also say that the challenges with social media have to do with some truly frightening, horrific, awful. Postings, behavior that. Have put our students can put our students at risk and even have tragic consequences. So these are. These are very challenging times around student discipline. And and what we can and cannot do related to that. So. So my goal was to provide you with what that framework looks like. I'm happy. To answer any questions. I don't know exactly how you want to manage that or. What time we have left, which I think is five minutes, but let me know.
I'll jump in if that's all right, Joanna.
Yeah, go ahead, Sheldon.
Thank you, Chan. This is super informative. I have a few questions related to that second criterion about jurisdiction seems to be the stickier one. The first is it sounds like. The reasonable expectation of disruption would be place-based, meaning. A speech in one place. Could reasonably affect disrupt school. Where that same speech somewhere else might not. And then the second one is. Have you, what have you seen as the threshold for disruption of school or reasonable disruption of school? Is it enough? For a single student, you know, to feel a threat? And therefore that that person's experience has been disrupted or does it really have to affect operations of a school?
You know, it's, it's interesting because the cases where there's been a six, so we're talking about where free speech and discipline are sort of melded together because that's where there's the higher standard. Of having to demonstrate disruption to school activities. Remember, in the general universe of discipline where free speech isn't an issue. We just have to prove that the event occurred and that it was connected to school activity or attendance, but we don't have to prove disruption. Or material disruption. It's only. When there'd be additional protection of free speech arises. Where I see. Where I have read cases where a court, ultimately the Ninth Circuit and other courts have found that there was. A substantial disruption related to speech. Has first of all, had to do. With exceptionally good investigation and documentation at the time that it occurs because that disruption, wherever the event occurred, the disruption has to occur at school. And. For example, I have seen cases where a student wrote a very threatening letter to a teacher. There are a number of cases. Where students have written what looked to be hit lists or kill lists. And then claimed their free speech protections. They didn't mean it. It was a joke. But where we learned that parents keep out. You know, two hundred students didn't come to school that day or that week. A teacher has had to go out on leave because she. Is is so fearful and distraught because there was a note directed at her. Where we see that the school community. Or individuals have had a long-term impact if a, if a. If a, if a note were directed to me and I was a student and I simply could not come back to school and I have seen that case as well. Where the student ultimately transferred to another school, could not return, needed psychological support. That's a substantial and material disruption. And unfortunately, in the Beverly Hills case, most of the students, for whatever horrible reason, rallied around the girls who had posted the YouTube video. And when they came back in two days. Her locker was decorated. She was a conquering hero. There really wasn't that level of disruption in school activities. Where a student comes back to campus, is able to go back to class, upset though he or she may be probably not. A substantial disruption.
So I have a question about bullying. So essentially. Tell me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is that bullying becomes speech. And if it starts outside of school. But then is posted like those girls posted on YouTube. What are the rights of the victim? In the case of bullying? I mean, obviously this, I'm amazed this girl went back to school and I'm. Really proud of her, actually. I don't know her, but it just really bothers me to hear that. The protection of a bully's speech. Takes precedent over the safety of the individual being bullied. Physical safety or emotional safety.
For whatever reason. Bullying in the public schools now has a pretty clear definition. And if it occurs in the schools and clearly under the jurisdiction of the schools. And it's the kind of pervasive behavior over time or one significant incident. That especially if there's a true threat, it's not generally analyzed under the issue of pre-speech. But there are a significant number of cases called the cyberbullying cases. Where the speech where where the bullying behavior was posted on social media or occurred outside of school. And tho- those tend to be the cases, the more. The more defamatory, the more frightening, the more direct, the more threatening the comments are. The connection to school activity or attendance. And the disruptive effect that has on the student, those tend to be pretty. Pretty clear connections that we can make. And and so I would say it's fair, it's probably likely that the school could exercise jurisdiction over one student bullying another student, even if outside of school and even. Through social media where that plays out with an impact at school.
And does the student who's the target of the bullying, does that student have to make the report like that girl who's on YouTube? I assume it stopped if she kept going to school, but what if it hadn't stopped and she just didn't report it? Is there?
Anybody could have reported it. Is that the issue? Did she herself have to have to report it? She didn't, but one of the advantages of her being the reporter is that they met with her first thing that morning. They could gauge how upset she was. They could provide her with the supports that she needed. And they actually rallied around her at the school site, but anybody could have reported that. And in fact, it was distributed to many students. It was taken down the next day. But a lot of students saw that video and any one of them could have reported it. It's one of the things we, we talk a lot about is reporting bullying behavior. Interestingly, the California Legislature decided a few years ago that. When, when staff and teachers in the school site see bullying or harassing behavior, they're obligated to report that as well. So it might have been that an adult. Saw, saw that, saw the posting.
And in terms of athletic codes of conduct, you mentioned that you've worked on these. How expansive have you seen them be like in terms of what they can discipline student athletes for outside of the school?
I have generally found. And this is just my experience. Because of how much litigation there has been, especially since twenty eleven. They are, they tend to be rooted. In the Ed Code disciplinary provision so that there isn't a question about jurisdiction and there isn't a question about whether the student can be subject to discipline. I, I do not often see now athletic codes of conduct that list a whole series of behaviors. That students could be sanctioned for with respect to athletic activity. That wouldn't also be disciplineable under the education code. I tend to see the connection more now than I used to. And again, it's because students have raised first, fourth, Fourteenth Amendment challenges to those kinds of discrepancies between. What is disciplineable behavior generally for students? And what it is for student athletes. But there may be an additional sanction imposed on a student athlete for that kind of behavior. I've also, I'll just throw this in. I have seen codes of conduct that talk about, you know, the Ed Code provisions that for which discipline suspension or expulsion can be imposed. And even if the question becomes, do we have jurisdiction to suspend or expel? Because we know that behavior occurred, we may impose a sanction with respect to athletic participation. Yeah.
And how does all of this apply to like weekends, winter breaks, summertime? Does it have to, does it have to then follow the students back when they get on campus?
Yes. It, it, it does. In order for us to have jurisdiction to act at all, there, it would have to follow the student back. And, and the longer the break, the less likely there is to be able to make a connection between school activity or attendance. Even, even a holiday break is a hard, the longer the break, it's just less likely that that argument is going to hold water. And when, when districts discipline a student, undoubtedly you know this, but if, if the district chooses to expel those cases, very frequently will go up to the county board on appeal. The county board is the first appellate body that can review a district's decision. And those are the kinds of things they will look for. Did you actually have jurisdiction? And did you provide the student with all his or her due process rights along the way? Remember notice and opportunity to be heard, an opportunity to a full hearing, notice 10 days ahead of time, clear notices about the charges, it's a, it's a substantial obligation. And when cases go up to the county board, they look at them with a, with a very critical eye, ensuring that students' rights have been protected in the process. But recognizing, remember again, I said, there is also a constitutional right to a free, safe and secure and peaceful campus. And I think those are the rights that sometimes we struggle with because finding a balance between the two, protecting one students for right on the one hand, to all students' right to come to school until safe and secure, which is very fundamental and constitutional. That's a challenge.
Any other questions? Liz, do you have any closing comments?
No, just thank you, Jan, for being here this evening and for the education on that. And I don't know if Gary, if you wanted to add anything, but it was as always very informative and good to see you again.
Thank you, Liz, you too.
Thank you so much. That was really clear, concise. I really appreciate that you did that.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your giving me the opportunity, I truly do.
Want to thank Jan for, for coming. I think that the, I think the, one of the takeaways from this that we've, we've learned is this process of discipline has really changed a lot in the state in California, particularly related to conduct disorder over the last eight years. This is an area where we need ongoing professional development on it. And it, and it's difficult because as Jan said, it's a case by case situation. It's, and it really requires, it requires a level of thorough investigation to be able to make that determination on those critical questions where, where, where we land. But we're lucky, we have Jan on our team that we can utilize as a resource. And we wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to, to, to build some common background knowledge on this as we move forward.
Thank you so much and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, I shall depart. And thank you again, talk to you soon.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 6.2, secondary extracurricular cohort update.
I'm just going to start by adding all of these principles as panels so they can talk. Hey, I think everybody's in here, show the screen.
Good evening, everybody. Dan Osterman, principal here at Casa Grande High School. I want to thank you for having us this evening. We'll try to do our best to follow the, our incredible colleagues in the elementary realm who did, I believe, a phenomenal presentation just a few weeks ago. So again, we're, we're providing an overview of a number of extracurricular and co-curricular activities happening in the secondary schools here in our district. And with that, I turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Kelly Chris from Petaluma Junior High.
Thank you. Ashley, if you go to slide three. So we began with a Zoom. Staying connected to our students during these times has been the most important thing to all of us. We reached out to our leadership students, our teachers, our librarians, our PTSAs, our colleagues and our parents to find ways to keep our students connected. Not only does each of our sites offer office hours, which provides support for students, but we have expanded by currently offering and scheduling clubs, games, Friday cahoots, assemblies, conferences and student recognition events. We also have future plans for events such as drive-in movies, spirit weeks and talent shows, to name a few. Next slide. So more of our current extracurricular offerings for students are right now Battle of the Books through our book club, 3D Printing through Tech Tuesday Club, monthly craft afternoon activities through Leadership and the library and a grade level among us challenge. Next. Becky, are you there?
Here we go, I'll try that again. Hi, I'm Becky Lofton, Principal at San Antonio High School in Valley Oaks Independent Studies School. And I'd like to echo Principal Osterman thanking you for giving us the opportunity to share the important work that my colleagues and I have been engaged in this year. We're always looking for ways to celebrate our seniors and recognize their accomplishments. On April 23rd, Petaluma Education Foundation will be awarding scholarships to 74 seniors across all of our high schools. Academic counselors, college and career counselors, and many teachers have helped our seniors navigate this application process. This year's awards total approximately $200,000. Additionally, many of our seniors from Costa Grande High School and Petaluma High School will be recognized for their volunteer work at our annual community achievement awards ceremony, which will be held April 22nd via Zoom this year. Recognized seniors receive a $500 award and see their name added to the trophy board. Staff from some of our smaller high schools made a drive-by delivery to seniors with a little treat bag that have T-shirts, small treats and candies to recognize them. We continue to celebrate our alt-ed graduates, of which we've had 24 to date. That includes those that are going to be graduating at the end of the current reporting period, which ends this Friday. And then finally, we recognize students last year of high school with Senior T-shirt Day, presenting seniors with a unique and special T-shirt. And there's some pictures of that event on the next slide. Cute kiddos. All right.
Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you very much, Justin Moore, Principal of Petaluma High School. I echo my colleagues and thanking you for letting us join you into the faceless void of the webinar. So our, our goal has also been to continue to connect our students to their shared interests. One of the ways that we do this is through club events in the fall. We continue to try to hold our club rush during, oh, during the early periods and get students connected through their very interests that they may have. Clubs like Circle of Friends, bilingual student ambassadors, Financial Gains Club, JSA, Echo Fashion Club. We started our Student Advisory Council this year, which has been very productive in listening to Student Voice, our FFA and the others that you see here. Those clubs have continued to try to implement their regular activities. Our Circle of Friends Club continues their holiday activities that they have done. Our FFA has continued to hold their chapter meetings and has actually added some fun games to theirs. They did a, their own little virtual shark tank recently, which I was able to join them for. And the Echo Fashion Club was actually able to hold a clothing drive the last weeks of January and early February. So they have continued to provide opportunities for their, their peers and participate via Zoom in the best way as possible.
Good evening, Bennett Holly, Principal of Kenock Junior High School. And my slide has to do with the drive-through pickup events that are happening at, at all the secondary sites. Campuses have realized drive-through opportunities are a great way to promote school spirit while also helping to make students and families feel more connected. PTSAs, along with leadership, have planned festive drive-throughs to spice things up. The collection distribution days have also served as an opportunity for teachers to, to meet their students in person. Teachers miss their students very much and they also miss being together. These drive-through events have served as a valuable, have served a valuable purpose in allowing schools to hand out and collect school materials while also demonstrating that we care and we miss seeing both students and families in person. As we move forward, the ASP students will, will play a larger role now that, that the restrictions are easing a bit and they're super excited about that. And we look forward to school resuming in the near future. But until then, these drive-through events serve as an excellent opportunity to wave and say hello and, and, and hand out some of our goodies. Thank you, next slide.
Connecting through visual and performing arts or VAPA. There's usually one teacher or one subject that students can relate to, that one thing that keeps them coming to school. For many students, it's in the form of art. Several sites have started extracurricular cohorts for music. Special masks and instrument catchers have been purchased to keep students safe. And at least two sites have started rehearsing for student virtual plays, so watch for that invite. Next slide.
Hi, I'm Greg Stevenson of Carpe Diem and Snow Mountain High Schools. Again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. I'm excited to highlight a couple of our outdoor activities that schools have planned for the spring. Hopefully getting students out from behind the screen and out and about. First off, there's a team of teachers that have recently started taking small groups of students to Adobe Creek where they're conducting wildlife surveys, including fish counts, as well as working on the restoration of the creek habitat. This is an ongoing project and the students participating are really excited to be continuing this project for the remainder of the year. Also, listening to Student Voice, our students indicated that they really missed monthly hikes and being outdoors. So they also like to connect with their school community in this way. So we've scheduled two different local hikes for the spring semester, one in around, or two and around Schollemberger Park on the Petaluma River, as well as another two and around Helen Putnam Regional Park.
We have approximately 50% of students at the Conference of High Schools connecting with athletics. We were very happy when California Department of Public Health provided us guidance on allowing athletics. So we have started implementing our first season of sports, which includes cross-country tennis, golf, swimming, and what was a new surprise to us, football. Football was identified previously, but we thought we would need to get into the orange tier in order to participate. And the California Department of Public Health recently came with good new guidance that allowed for outdoor athletics such as football to be, to be conducted. We want to reach a certain threshold of cases per 100,000. So that we're looking forward to that. The Vine Valley athletically, for which we participate, met today with our athletic directors and principals to discuss a plan moving forward. And we actually included our, and invited our district COVID-19 coordinator, Brian DeForre, to help us with that. And so that will hopefully be, or at least that is, has the opportunity to begin on Friday, this Friday. All other sports have, are, have been moved to season two, which starts April 12th. And those sports will have an opportunity for conditioning. Just forthcoming, we're still working on that. And then in other cases, there are pickup games for badminton, table tennis, flag football, soccer and basketball when they are allowed.
We also have a number of CTE courses, our CTE programs, that's our career technical education courses. You can think of them as our hands-on learning courses. And we have a number of different robust programs and career pathways at both of the comprehensive high schools. The picture you see here is actually our ASP co-president from last year. This is Eva Isola, and I believe she's at the Lake Sonoma facility about to harvest some eggs there from a steelhead trout. At Casa, we're very proud of our fish hatchery program, the United Anglers of Casa Grande. And annually, we, actually the students themselves take the lead and raise successfully 20,000 young steelhead trout. And then they are released into the Russian River watershed and beyond. So within that program alone, we have students also in Adobe Creek and other watershed areas doing research and restoration, as well as getting ready to, to raise that annual allotment of 20,000 eggs in our fish hatchery, which is on campus there off of Eli Boulevard. We also have our very active Gaucho Garage Auto Shop program. So there we have students working in pairs, socially distanced, doing various labs and shop services. We also have our sports medicine program getting back into shape soon. They support all of our athletic programs very well. And also, PHS is looking forward to getting some of their shop services going as well.
Sorry about that. In addition to the things that you've already heard, our focus is on reaching out and engaging students in activities of interest that help further their curricular needs. So we surveyed our students to come up with some suggestions and ideas of interest to them. Across all of our campuses, there are a growing number of opportunities for students to engage in curricular activities, some of which are in progress and some of which we hope plan to implement in the next few weeks, including an exciting opportunity for stargazing as part of an astronomy class, targeted support groups for struggling students and small group physical education classes. And the next slide. So, gosh, if nothing else, distance learning has revealed the importance of relationships with our school community. Now more than ever, we see the value that our families and our support groups bring to education and recognize that those partnerships are the bedrock of our schools. To that end, there is a menu of options for our stakeholders to choose from when thinking about how best to support our students. Volunteer, join one of the school sites' parent groups, donate supplies, continue to encourage students' participation and keep in contact. We have a robust system for communicating and all of our sites regularly send out updates and share important information. And I think that brings us to you, Justin.
Yes, it does. So thank you again for having us here tonight. We're looking forward to the opportunities that we can continue, continue to provide our students, regardless of what the current environment is, to get them connected to the schools and provide them opportunities to pursue their interests, their academics and just really connect with each other.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Yeah, I'll start off, I want to thank the principals for those reports. I want to ask them the same thing I asked the elementary principals. Is there any sense of the reach of these efforts so far in terms of the proportion of students who are connecting, you know, with their classmates or with their teachers outside of academics? Is there a way to measure it? I don't, I don't even know if there is. Well, certainly for, for tracking purposes, I would say for, you know, for safety reasons and contact tracing purposes and just in case we, we track attendance very closely on that. I would say that we purposefully schedule and design events to meet a wide range of students as well. And certainly, once we get more athletic. And certainly, once we get more athletics going, that's going to help tremendously. And as more, more opportunities just become available to students, I think we're going to see a broader, broader involvement. But so far, at least at Casa Grande, we have a pretty broad involvement and diversity of students campus-wide. But in many cases, those events are, are just now getting off the ground as well.
And just to kind of add on to that, I think that the response to some of the surveys that we've done, so we put out a Student Advisory Council survey to really gather information on what students are most interested in. And the fact that we had a significant number of our students participate, I think was very telling. The Youth Truth Survey that we recently did, and actually we'll be going over data soon. For our students, we had, and at least at Petaluma High, we had an 85% participation rate. Granted, it was an assignment in class, but that still seemed pretty high. So we were very pleased that we got that much response and we're really looking forward to look at that information. And so I think those are good indicators to tell that we are able to connect the students.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. That was great.
With the kids.
Really good.
I cut you off.
No, no, I was just saying, thank you. It was great. I'm glad to hear it. I hope it grows and grows and grows. Yes.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Dan. All right. So next is COVID-19 Safety Plan Update.
So we have three individuals that are going to speak related to kind of give an update on the COVID Safety Plan. And that's going to be Mr. DeGraw and Jason Seder, our director. And we're going to introduce Brian DeFor, who is our COVID Safety Coordinator. The COVID Safety Plan is a very misunderstood document and has caused quite a bit of consternation in the district because of the inaccurate information that's being provided in public regarding it. There was an information out that there were 20 districts that turned in their COVID Safety Plans when they had just received their template, not just days prior, when in fact, we contacted those districts and they had turned in their checklist. The checklist is not the COVID Safety Plan. The Safety Plan is quite a bit more complicated than that. And I, to our credit, to the credit of the staff here, they have put together a really thoughtful plan that they have submitted. And we are one of the first districts that has submitted a COVID Safety Plan under the criteria provided by Sonoma County Department of Health, just what, 10 days ago? So we'll pass it on to Cliff and let him kind of walk through, give you a quick update on this.
Yeah, so, so no visuals, no slideshow, you're just going to have to listen to this one and just picture it in your head. So, yeah, so to Gary's point, you know, this whole year, we've been trying to follow, you know, the most updated guidance slash recommendations slash requirements. And there's, there's three levels that mainly comes from. There's the federal level from the CDC, there's a state level from the California Department of Public Health, and then there's the county level. And the way this usually works is if the county has stricter requirements, you go by those. And the CDC often are just suggestions, they're not requirements. So it's usually the state and then the county. So just one, being on top of those and understanding those as they come out and how they play together and how they conflict is, is an ongoing, you know, education this year. And this all came down, on January 14th, the California Department of Public Health released updated guidance to what they had put forth in the summer on, you know, what schools need to do to plan for returning in person. And they, with that guidance, they required the submittal of this new thing, this COVID Safety Plan, which consists of two parts. One is the CAL OSHA Prevention Program, it's more of a, an employee document, and then this checklist. And what was happening right off the bat is districts were completing the checklist, which is pretty simple, right? Name, date, check, check, and you don't have to provide really any details. And then the county realized that, you know, that's all the folks were turning in and they decided they wanted to add some additional requirements to ensure that not only were districts signing off that they were making these plans, but they actually had plans to go along with the checklist. So on the 11th of February, the county held a webinar, Sonoma County Public Health held a webinar and said, "We created a template, so in addition to the CAL OSHA plan, in addition to the checklist, we want to see the details." So they came out with an 87-point rubric and a very detailed template and said, "You got to do this." In addition to those other things. So the state doesn't require this additional documentation. The state guidance actually says it's not required, it's strongly recommended, but it's not required. But yet the county, you know, said, "No, we, we want this, we want the details, we want to ensure that when we approve plans, you know, they, they meet our expectations." So for elementary schools that are in a purple county, the new guidance allows them to come back on campus. If case rates, as you know, are below 25 for at least five days, and they have submitted and have an approved COVID Safety Plan. So we scrambled to put together, so the CSP contains a lot of information that existed in the plans we created in the summer, just in a new format and with some more detail. So we, we got together with our staff, we set a goal of having them submitted within two weeks from the, from the webinar on the 11th. I'm happy to say we completed it in just over one week and submitted them on Friday. So it's, it gets very, very specific. So there's eight plans, actually, there's a elementary district plan and then there's one for each school site that gets down into, you know, how are we maximizing when students arrive and leave? How do we make sure on campus they're keeping physical distance and we're managing traffic so that students don't mix from their stable groups? We had, we had to plan for things like, how do we repurpose bathrooms so that students from different stable groups don't mix potentially in the restrooms? So to our benefit, on Thursday of last week, there was a weekly COVID coordinators meeting that Brian was a part of, and we got to learn from County Public Health what areas of concern, you know, they had in the, the plans that had been submitted to that date or the things that they had seen. So that was a good heads up before we submitted ours to go and make sure that we were addressing those areas of, of concern and areas of focus from the county. And I, you know, the county's doing the best they can, they want to make sure that we're safe when we come back. But even in those, those calls, there were times where two doctors from the same public health office had contradictory opinions on what was allowed and what was approved and what wouldn't be approved. So it's a little bit of a moving target, but our principals, our elementary principals did a, you know, a huge task last week. Brian and I spent a lot of time together, you know, making sure we had everything prepared. And the county has seven business days to respond and either approve or require changes. We're hoping we don't have to make any changes and then we can kind of get this behind us and plan for returning when that's appropriate. If we do need to make changes, we'll make those as soon as possible and resubmit. So just, it's, it's, it was an added, kind of added piece of work that got thrown on top of a lot of things. And, you know, we, we did our best to put together a, you know, meaningful project and create a really good plan. So this, you know, so now we're, we met today with our secondary schools and we're working on finalizing their plans. Of course, their plans do not need to be approved by the county because when you're in the red, secondary schools can't open until we're in the red. And when you're in the red, you don't need county approval, you just have to post the plan. So there's more information on our website, if you go to the COVID, the COVID hub, you can access all of the plans, all of the details, all of the maps. And I, and I leave some of this information there explaining the situation. And there's resources to the guidance. Other things, Melinda, I think you're. But, um, so there's more information for you to, for you to peruse on the website, gives a little bit more of the context and the resources that we use to create the plan. So I just want to give a big shout out again to our elementary principals for, you know, clearing their schedules and working hard with us. And Brian as well did a wonderful job. So hopefully, hopefully we get a one and done. If not, we will make a quick fix and resubmit. So, all right, now I'm going to turn it over to Jason. We'll, we'll, we'll open it up for questions at the end. So I'll turn it over to Jason to talk a little bit more about the family survey and what we're doing on that.
Yeah, so the, the principals did a lot of heavy lifting last week, but they are not close to being done because now we're into the survey part and they're, they're on the front lines with that. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the survey. Back when we began this whole thing, everyone remembers that the district was really clear with families that, that we're going to be providing hybrid instruction and we're going to be providing distance learning instruction and we're going to give people options. And so what that means is that we have to survey them to figure out, what do you want? What are you looking for? So that we can start planning. The first thing that we wanted to do is we wanted to be really clear with families about what they would be choosing. So we, we did our, our webinar, a webinar on the AM PM hybrid schedule and sharing what that looked like. We included a lot of information around the plan. Cliff and I developed like a short brochure about it because our, our whole goal was we wanted people to know what they're choosing. And now we have done the survey and we, we pushed that out. Our principals have been following up and nagging and harassing people and we are that 98% done. We have half of our schools are already complete and the other half are in the, in the last, the last couple of yards of finishing. And they, they followed up. The next thing that we are going to be surveying with right away is we're going to also start surveying our families around their needs for childcare because that is strongly intertwined. We developed this, this schedule back in, in August, and we considered many schedules. We considered, you know, multiple days on and multiple days off and alternating days and AM PM. And we were really clear as, as a group of educators, the best thing for kids, learning-wise, was this model. But we know that, that it also means that some families are going to need some support. So we're working with our, all of our partners that are already at our sites. We're working with community partners as well to find what kind of solutions can be offered to families to help when we do go back to hybrid if they're coming back. So we're also going to be working through our principals to do that survey next of families so that we can make sure that there's that type of support. As soon as they get all the, all of their survey results back, then I'm meeting with principals and we're looking through the results and seeing how we can configure learning groups in terms of numbers. We're not actually placing individual students, but in terms of how many groups of, of distance learning versus hybrid and AM and PM. And then they're going to be working, and we're also going to work with the union, consult with them a little bit, the PFT, and then bring it to the teachers, the principals are going to work with their teachers to actually set the groups, much the same way that they do when they set normal classes. We rely on our teachers to know the students and know which students go well together and, and how, how we can have optimal groups. So that's how we're going to approach developing our, our, our learning groups. So our next steps, we're, we're finalizing the survey, we're going to set our learning groups. We're then going to share those learning groups out with our families and, and then make any needed adjustments. So we're going to try and do that as quickly as we can in a thoughtful and measured way without just blindly moving forward. But hoping to do it in a quick, as quickly as we can. And all, that's, that's all I have on the survey and I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Yeah, one more thing before we go there. So one of the challenges here is that, that obviously not, not all of our, our families want to come back to, to a hybrid model. They want to stay in distance learning. In fact, there is, there is no schools where anybody said 100% we want to do, we want to do hybrid. And so the challenge here, the scheduling part is not as simple as saying, well, they already are scheduled with a teacher. Yet some, in some classes, in some of our, our school sites, it's 50/50. In other classes, it might be 90/10. And so you have to literally go case by case in the situations. Plus, we want to be sure that, that families that really do need that childcare support, we have to be very thoughtful about how we place those students so that we will have a place for them to go upon the completion of school on that given day.
Yeah, and it really is a puzzle because the numbers of childcare could affect how, at any given school, it could affect how childcare plays out. So Gary is right, it is literally class by class, grade by grade at every single site that where you have to look at this.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Brian DeFor and I'm the COVID-19 Coordinator for the district. And so thank you very much for this opportunity to provide you with a quick update. I appreciate it very much. So Cliff talked about our COVID Safety Plan, and if you look at the plan, you'll see a lot of things that you recognize there. The COVID Safety Plan outlines all of our risk mitigation strategies and protocols. And there's a lot of things in there that are very familiar to all of us at this point. Face coverings, hand sanitation, social distancing and all of those things. But one of the things that I'm working on that may not be readily evident, that I thought I'd give you an update on, is our testing. The idea of offering testing as a risk mitigation protocol. So we are in the process right now of, we're going through the onboarding process for the state-run testing and lab facility so that we can start offering all of our PCS employees free asymptomatic testings called surveillance testing as an opportunity for them at their option to get testing here at the district. So we're working through all of the onboarding with the, with our testing lab, as well as planning all of the logistics around what it takes to run a testing facility. So technology, software, electricity, easy up staffing, all of those things. And so we're going through that process right now to be able to offer that to all PCS staff if they'd like for asymptomatic testing. What that will also do for us is it will also give us an added layer if we have to, to do symptomatic and response testing as CAL OSHA requires if anything happens. So, so that's what we're working on right now for staff. When we return to in-person learning, our hope is to, our plan is to leverage that to offer periodic randomized testing for students as well. And then also that will, again, provide us the opportunity to have an extra layer of risk mitigation if necessary for outbreaks and exposure and things like that. So there'll be test kits in the nursing offices and, and we're planning through all of those details as we move towards in-person learning. So my job is to make sure that all of that begins and implements and then runs smoothly and then work very closely with our, our nursing staff who are phenomenal to make sure that we are very strictly following county and state guidelines if there is a case, if there is exposure positive. So that's what, and just an additional update for you in addition to the COVID Safety Plan. And so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
I was just going to say, Cliff, that Brian, Brian also handles all of our, all of our contact tracing. He currently does that for the district, for, for, for current students and employees that we have coming to the, coming for district services. And he'll handle all of that as well.
So then I was, I was just going to add, so the CSP doesn't just live on a website. There will be education and training on all of these protocols. So there will be an additional elementary parent webinar, family webinar that we're going to do to go over the specifics. Our first one was more about the schedule. This one will be about all of these guidelines, you know, the, how to properly wear a face mask, you know, just the, the physical distancing, you know, how to use a restroom, when you come on campus, where do you go? Just all of these things that are in there to mitigate, you know, the spread will educate families. We have to train staff as well. There's certain processes. And some of it is a little cyclical, right? It's in the guidance and the county says, are you going to, what are you going to do about face coverings? And we say, There's certain processes and some of it is a little cyclical, right? It's in the guidance and the county says, are you gonna, what are you going to do about face coverings? And we say, we're going to do the guidance, you know? And you have to kind of repeat it back to them, but you know, not everyone is, is, you know, up on all of these, these fine points. So we're going to make sure we train everyone. And that was part of the plan too. How are you going to train staff and families? So that's in there as well. So I just wanted to fill in that hole. All right. Any questions in what has?
I just have one. I don't know if it's identified yet, but how, so how does testing students randomly work and like what kind of consent do we need from their parents? Kind, that, that kind of situation, if anyone can speak to that.
Well, yeah, we, we, we're going to follow as it comes to that particular piece, some of the CDPH protocols. We haven't really delved down into necessarily how we'll handle the results as it relates to, to, to staff and student testing goes directly to those, those individuals. So there, there, there regardless, you're, you're at a situation where you are reliant on whoever the, uh, has been, had the test administered to, to self-report.
Well, and then the, the, the other thing in, in the guidance is in, in cases of students exhibiting symptoms at school are possible, right? They're, they're referred to their own private healthcare provider to get a test. Or if we have ours up and running and that's an option, that will be an option, but it's kind of up to them. They have an option to choose. All right.
Jason, Jason, I sense your hesitancy to talk about the survey. I'm going to press you on this a little bit. Can you give us a sense of the general demand for hybrid instruction among the families? And, and a sense of the range of demand across our elementary sites?
I can do that. You bet. In general, we were, were about, we're at about seventy-five percent as a district, elementary district, the, all those seven schools, about seventy-five percent want it hybrid and about twenty-five percent want distance learning. When you break it out by school, it can, it can vary from a low of like fifty-five, fifty-six percent to a high of eighty-nine percent or something like, when I looked at the actual numbers, I don't have them in front of me, but there was a, over a twenty-six percent difference between our highest school and our lowest school. So I think that's what Gary was speaking to, the, the range that is required to plan and, and there's not one solution. Oh, this is how we're going to do it because it's, it's not clean numbers. And then as you look at schools, like we have two schools that have, have just completed and I looked through their numbers. We have some classes and grades where everyone's back and some where a, a bunch are, are not. So it's, it is varied, but that's the, in the big, big strokes, it's about seventy-five percent in person and twenty-five percent distance learning.
Thanks. That's very helpful. And just to clarify, the puzzle that you're solving is by sight, right? We're not imagining children to be to, to balance the puzzle. We're not imagining children going to other schools that they're not, that they're involved in.
Our, our, our priority i- is going to be to keep students at their, obviously to keep students with their teachers if we can. And to keep students at their site if we can. There, there are possible scenarios where students might need to, if we're doing, they're doing distance learning, they might need to be doing distance learning at another, at another site or with another teacher. I don't anticipate us needing to move any person, any students to in-person instruction at another site. But, but again, that's, I kind of just ordered our, our, kind of the priority list that we're going down. Try and keep students with their teachers or at least at their sites, that sort of thing. But it, it's conceivable that students might be at a different school if, if that situation came up.
This is along those lines, Jason. Um, kind of. If you have a class where you have like a hundred percent of the kids, uh, well, do you have a class or possibly where you have all the kids so that it exceeds the guidelines of how many kids you can have in a classroom?
No.
You don't have to do that.
We, no, we have seen, so I've, I've looked at the, I've looked specifically at one of our two schools that are complete. And actually we had a third that completed today, but I've, I've looked at one, I'm looking at another tomorrow. The one that we looked at, for example, there were some classes that everyone's coming back. But our classes are such that with thirty-two student limit, um, most of our classrooms have the space and in this case, they certainly did to accommodate sixteen students in an AM cohort and sixteen in a PM cohort.
Well, that, I just want to clarify, there is, once we're back in person, there is no limit. The only limit is physical distancing. So right now the limit is by cohort, yes, fourteen students, two adults. Once we come back, as long as we can fit, you know, kids safely six feet apart, whether that's twenty, twelve, fifteen, sixteen. But like Jason said, we're probably not even going to have groups that big anyways.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize that. I didn't realize our classrooms were that big.
Yeah, I didn't realize, yeah. But go ahead, Maddie. I cut you off. Um, so Justin had kind of alluded to sports. So Brian, what is your role now that, you know, we've announced or the state has announced the return to sports? Like, are you helping them with contact tracing, testing, all of those types of things?
So, yes. Um, so my role is to support the school, each school in the beginning. So getting student athletes registered. If there's any requirements in that process to help them learn and recognize the protocols, the new protocols that will be required of them as they're, you know, as they show up in the field and those types of things, work with the coaches and the A Ds and the principals on making sure that we're following the protocols around screening and taking daily attendance. Um, and then also sports specific requirements, like if there's, you know, if there's going to be a ball, you know, what happens with that ball when there's a new group that comes in, is it replaced? We're cleaning all of those types of things. Um, and then as if there's afterwards, if there is report of exposure or positive case, work with the site and our nursing staff and on occasion the county to do contact tracing and communication out to the community about what's, what's happening, what's happening next. And so, so we're working through that process right now with state guidelines for sports that have, that process is complete for sports that have been approved for purple tier. Um, and then as things evolve, then we'll continue to do that with new sports that continue to get approved separately. We follow a very similar process working on creating opportunities for students to be able to condition. So it's separate from their league play. It's an opportunity to condition the, the requirements there are a little more stringent in terms of stable groups and group size and things like that. So we work very closely with each individual site to try to make sure that those things are happening. So it's about mitigating risk and then making sure we're ready if anything happens.
Any other questions, anyone?
Yeah, I got one more. Um, so when we, once we head to hybrid, our distance learning cohorts obviously are going to dissolve because of space issues. Some of those children who are in our distance learning cohorts, they're, they're there because of connectivity issues, not necessarily, um, you know, need for, um, you know, physical connection. So, um, I guess what I'm asking is those children, those children's families are going to have to make a choice of, uh, well, they're going to have to go back, be a part of the hybrid essentially, right? Because there won't be the distance learning cohorts. And if they have connectivity issues at home.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. I mean, we're going to deal with it by name, by need on a case-by-case basis. There are some situations where, um, there will be, I'm sure some situations. Well, we'll look to try to accommodate, we're certainly going to try to accommodate the family's need right now. We have the ability to do some things, but it's, it's really difficult to, depends on the scenario, you know, how, what the scenario is. We want folks, we told folks that we were going to give them an option and we'll, we're going to, that's what our goal is to try to make that happen.
So one, one, one more thing I should share. So the county also let us know for secondary hybrid planning, we cannot have more than three stable groups. So that basically, you know, we had, we had the three-point-one schedule and six-point-one schedule that we were like, depending on how many weeks we come back, we'll figure out which one to do. Well, that's been decided for us. So, so we'll be looking at that three-period model. So whatever, whatever time is remaining in the semester, we'll have to split it in half and do eight days for one chunk, B days for the other chunk, because we can't have more than those three groups. So, which would have been great to know, you know, a few months ago. But, you know, they just barely shared that, so.
It's, can you repeat that one more time? That the, the requirement at secondary is that the mixing can't be, sorry, just repeat it.
Yeah, you cannot have more than three stable groups. So you can't have more than three class periods meeting on a schedule. So that limits you to three at the max or two or one. So our six-period schedule, the three days, A days and B days where kids are mixing with six groups, that's not, that's not allowed. Yeah.
So to recap, um, we are, we are well on our way. We will, we will be, we are ready. We've got our CSP in for elementary. We are in the middle of, ready, are completing the CSP for the secondary. We're waiting to see what, because most of the information in our elementary will also be in the secondary. So we're waiting to see what, what changes they, they, they want regardless. The CSP is not going to be the issue related to reopening. Everything is, will, will be in place no matter when that particular date is determined or conditions are determined.
Okay, anything else? I just want to thank everyone, Brian, Cliff, Jason, all the principals who just turned on a dime and got those safety plans in. And also I know that there's new things coming at you every day. Newsom had a press conference again. I'm sure he announced different things for you guys to have to conform to as well. So I just really appreciate all of your work.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it was, um, I know I'm supposed to be done, but I just, so there, there was that February first deadline. That, that one threw a lot of people for a loop. Um, the governor had that proposal. And if you were open already, which we weren't, you had to submit it by February first. So people were like, you don't have it in, what happened February first? And then right after that, people were turning them in and we were hearing people turn them in and we were like, there's, how did they do this so quick? Like they just came out with this crazy rubric. Well, it's because it was, in most cases, it was just the checklist. So we, I mean, this whole time we were, you know, we thought we were on top of it and then, you know, you, you, you don't want this to be the hangup like Gary said. So, um, you know, we were trying to make sure that didn't happen. So, all right, I'll stop talking.
Well, actually, I have a question about that. The, um, so the new, uh, the legislature just passed, uh, new kind of, um, monies and budgets and guidelines. And they said that if you, if you're open by, is it April fifteenth now? Then you will get that extra funding.
Yeah, no, there's nothing passed. They, 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 no, no, the Senate and the Assembly came to an agreement, but, but they have to come to an agreement with the governor. So there, we're no far, we're no farther along than we were back in January. There's no, there is no agreement.
There is, okay. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all. Welcome, Brian. I mean, I know you've been here for a couple of months, but welcome officially to your first board presentation. You did great.
Thank you so much.
All right. Item six-point-four summer school and twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two school update for traditional and year-round schedule.
Yeah. So, um, obviously I'm, I'm, I'm lucky that I have a group that's on top of a lot, all of these items. What we're, our goal right now is to complete the compliance pieces to be ready to, to start for return of students, but we're also have to look out and plan accordingly for the summer. Knowing that no matter, you know, all, what are all of our, our significant efforts that we've put forward this year for, from our staff or our students, we still are, have a number of things that we're going to need to mitigate moving forward because there, there is some learning loss that has taken place in all of this. And then while, while we're not responsible for the pandemic, we are responsible for ensuring that we provide our kids everything that they need moving forward to help address the realities of what we've been through since last March. So to that end, um, we're looking at very specifically at summer program. And we've already started the planning process for that and it'll pick up steam quite a bit in March and parents will be hearing more about it in early April. Specifically in, in a couple of areas. Um, and I'm just going to speak to two of them tonight. Um, the first one is our concern about our current TKK first and second graders. We're looking at an expanded summer program this summer, beginning in January, going through July with some modifications for the year-round school. And that would be taking place at all elementary sites, whereas previously summer programs were specific to just one site. We're looking at a very robust summer school program, probably five hundred students plus. And we'll be providing more details. It'll probably be a three-quarter of the day type of a program as far as total time for students and we'll be getting information to parents. We'll let them know in our update, but we'll provide them specific information on by April first. That's our goal.
Will there be childcare as well? For the summer programs?
We are looking to provide childcare opportunities, but we're also trying to look at it in a way that, that mitigates it so that, that if the parent does have to incur the expense, it's minimal.
And just to be clear, this is for all TK through second?
Available to all TK through second. And so we, it, it is a very ambitious plan and it's, and it is in-person learning. The secondary level, we're looking at a combination of some in-person and distance. We know that we're going to want to put, put in place some credit recovery options. Um, and we'll be providing parents more information on that at the same time that we do for elementary approximately the first of April. Moving into twenty-one, twenty-two school update. Our year-round schools are scheduled to begin on July twenty-second. Our traditional schools are scheduled to begin on August seventeenth. We are planning and intending on providing full in-person instruction for both programs and planning accordingly. And we will also communicate in addition to our summer attentions, intentions. An update regarding twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two later in a weekly update. But all plans are, are moving forward for, for a return to, to normal operations. And that's my update.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments about that?
No, I think it's exciting and I think it helps parents start to plan for the summer. When even in a normal year, a lot of parents are scrambling to find activities for their kids all summer. So hopefully this can supplement those.
We're going to have to do some supplementing next year. There's no doubt about that. And I'm, you know, obviously I just spoke to, to the summer program, but the reality is that, um, we're going to have to really do some really meaningful assessment in the first thirty to forty-five days of the school year to determine where, where, where are we? Our teachers are experts at where kids should be at certain points of time. And we're going to get a pretty good sense of where we are. And so some of those discussions I'm sure will take place through, through educational services. But we do need to do some, some diagnostic assessments and, and see where, where our kids are at and be able to. And be able to help our classroom teachers provide support that's above and beyond what they are doing, not replaces classroom and in, in classroom instruction, but it, it's in addition to, and there's a variety of different ways that, that we could creatively do that. That's part of what we'll look at when we look at our budget. Coming closer towards the end of the year, there'll be, there'll be dollars that we'll need to set aside to, in, in a specific reserve account to provide those, those particular kinds of services. Cause I do anticipate those will be one-time services that we will provide for the 2021, 2022 school year. Not likely that we'll be able to sustain that economically beyond that.
Anyone else? Any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Cliff, Jason, everybody. All right. Moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. Um, and I do believe there were a couple of students who have been waiting patiently who wanted to speak. I'm not going to make them wait until the end. If they want to speak on something, I'll let them speak now, even though, right now it's just comments for non-agendized items. So I'm going to read our policy and then we'll open up the chat for a couple of minutes. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, "Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit, limit per subject matter." So we're going to open up the chat and we're going to ask that you put in your first and last name. And, and the topic that you wish to speak upon.
So it looks like there's a lot of items that are related to agendized, an agendized item. Which is, 12.1.1. We need folks to, that, if you just put your name, that's not enough. You need to be a little bit more specific about your topic that you're going to speak to. So we know where to put you in the order. You'll all get a chance to comment.
I do know that there's one student, Evelyn. She's here under her dad's name. Michelle's let you know under John. I don't know how to say the last name, so B O N A N N O. Definitely want to prioritize her comment. We'll let her go first.
So I think we can close the, the chat. How do you want to do this? Do you want to?
All right, I was muted. I'm just trying to get an idea of which topics people want to speak on.
Well, teacher vaccinations, um, probably that, that fits outside of the, of, I mean, we could just kind of start taking the ones that are, that are the most obvious that are not, that are not part of the, the, well, there's nothing on here from consent, I don't think. Let me look. Chris, do you see anything on here? The chats that are related to consent?
No, I'm scrolling through. I don't see anything.
So I think you need to open it up now for comment, in addition, comments, people that want to make a comment on action items. Because we need to see how many people actually want to comment on it.
On the action items? On the, on the consent agenda, you mean? Or?
We could.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're on non-agendized. You're right. So, I think you start, I think you, I, you can start with, Patricia would probably be the first one. And then we can work through, down through them.
I'm going to start with Evelyn, actually.
Okay, we're, and she's, what, she, she's under her father's name?
Yeah, John, last name spelled B O N A N N O.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
Okay, so hold on, let me get my timer going. Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Evelyn. I'm nine years old and a fourth grader at McNeer Elementary. I live two blocks away from Petaluma High School. I want to address my concerns about the scoreboard on the softball field at Petaluma High School. Instead of saying home to the Trojans, it reads home to the Lady Trojans. As a female student, I think Petaluma City Schools should change the sign to say home to the Trojans, like the sign on the baseball field. There's no gender specification on the main athletic field for male or female or other, so I call this out on the softball field. By established by 1972 federal Title IX and Senate, Senate Bill 1375. Petaluma City Schools has a legal responsibility to treat all students equally in all ways. My teachers have taught my class that all people are created equal, like the founding fathers are in the constitution. Please consider changing all signs that are gender referenced. Along with field names, the team names should be gender neutral too. Additionally, the males, the male teams have two designated fields, the baseball field and the football field, which are both in mint condition. In contrast, the female teams share a field with the gophers, their holes, dogs and their waist. Please consider having some work done on the not so nice field and have a designated area for dogs. Secondly, all the fair fields should be shared equally among all the teams, which makes renaming easier too. I look forward to attending Petaluma High School and hope by then some gender neutral changes will be made. And that female athletes are treated equally to male athletes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Evelyn. You did great. And you stayed within the time limit. That was awesome. Wait, what else is coming? Okay, so next, let's see. It looks like there's a lot on our action item. Which is the resolution. So I'm going to go next with Sal Andropoulos.
Yes, can you hear me? Hi, I'm Sal Andropoulos. They've been pronouns. I'm with Petaluma Tide and North Bay LGBTQI families. Just wanted to, um, related to the presentation on off-campus harassment and intimidation. Thank you for the presentation is very, you know, informative. Um, and good to sort of, um, learn about that, you know, hear about that framework. And so just wanted to, I guess, express or reiterate, you know, strong support for the district and the school board and in any efforts either through, you know, district-wide policies or school site policies, athletic codes of conduct, or as, you know, superintendent, you know, mentioned earlier, through things like professional development, you know, student and community outreach, like the circle up process that's ongoing. Um, and collaboration through, you know, within the city, with city council, the police department to address, you know, students engaging in off-campus, um, you know, harassment or intimidation. Cause it's a really, you know, important issue that impacts a lot of, you know, students and members in our community. And I understand that the policies that, you know, the different disciplinary, you know, issues are, are addressed through, are derived from different legal frameworks, but I think it's worth pointing out that like the PCS policy that addresses sexual harassment applies to off-campus conduct that has a continuing effect on campus. And, you know, so I think it's kind of just worth thinking about, you know, how, you know, off-campus, you know, racial harassment, harassment that can have a continuing effect on campus, you know, should, should be or could be addressed, you know, and just what is available there to address that. And, you know, as we heard tonight, you know, harassment and intimidation that take place off-campus have the very real potential to negatively impact, you know, large numbers of students or smaller numbers who, you know, I think bullying and harassment is a big reason why students transfer or they just stop going to school altogether. And that's a really significant impact, you know, according to what we heard tonight and just, I think, in people's life experience. And so, and while I, again, you know, I understand that district policy can't infringe on students' First Amendment or other constitutional rights. The district also has an obligation to adequately respond to discrimination and, you know, especially if the district response is centered around implementing things like restorative justice practices, you know, in education, rather than more punitive measures like suspension or expulsion, it would seem appropriate, um, for the district to take a strong stand in seeking to prevent off-campus harassment and intimidation by students. You know, again, through a number of avenues like professional development, student leadership development, and really just again, working on this long-term shift in, in culture that the district, I think that, that work is underway on in terms of, you know, implementing curriculum that is inclusive, Fair Act, ethnic studies, inclusive, you know, gender, gender-affirming, family life and sex education, things like that. And so, uh, again, thank you for the presentation on that. Just, uh, yeah, again, I think there are a lot of different avenues for, for pursuing, for pursuing, um, this. And then secondly, just wanted to.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Oh, okay. Well, talk fast. Again, I just want to also just express support and thank the school board members for continued just leadership and commitment to advancing equity and to uplifting the diverse perspectives and voices of students who are the most impacted by harassment and intimidation in our community. Specifically by POC and LGBTQIA+ students. And it's especially important with the recent attacks on Asian and Pacific Islander American community members we're seeing across the country and here in Petaluma. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I think Ashley said that she saw another student in the audience. Ashley, can you bring that one up?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like it's under the name Jenny.
Yes, hello.
Go ahead.
Hello, we are the LaBakas family. My name is Vili and I'm 12 years old.
My name is Brian. I'm 12 years old.
We attend Kenilworth Junior High.
My name is Jenny and you do not not want to know how old I am, but I have been with Petaluma City Schools for 23 years. I am the VP of Elementary with Petaluma Federation of Teachers. My husband Frank works for PG&E. When the district lost power on January 4th, he was the one that restored power. When Kenilworth lost power on August 24th, he fixed it. It was a breaker. My husband and I are both graduates of Petaluma High School and have strong ties to this amazing community. We would like to thank the board, Petaluma City Schools, principals, support staff, custodians, food service, maintenance, and the teachers. Petaluma City School has prepared my children to be responsible, kind, courageous, respectful and persevere. Kenilworth staff has been amazing during this transition.
I want to thank Ms. Ramono, Ms. Callahan, Ms. Hill and Bailey Arthur. They always please tighten for me whether it's for school related or just a chat. They're very supportive.
I would like to thank Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Ranger, Ms. Rennie and Ms. Street for all the help and support. They have been there for me.
These teachers have gone above and beyond for our children. We appreciate the office hours and constant support you provide both academically and emotionally. I fear that when secondary returns to hybrid, we might lose this connection. Yes, we have had our struggles. We have also taken advantage of the services provided by the counseling department with Bailey Arthur. I hope these opportunities will be available when we return to normal. In fact, families need more of this support when we look to the future of Petaluma City Schools. Now my teacher hat. I started my career as a sixth grade teacher at McKinley in 98. The last time I spoke to this board was September 9th, 2014. Since then, I feel that our relationship with the board has improved tremendously. Thank you. I applaud everyone's hard work to communicate and work toward what is best for our students and staff. I just want to let you know my current kindergarten students are amazing and their families are amazing. This has been the highest academic class I have had in my years of kindergarten. They are reading, manipulating numbers, possess strong verbal skills and have stellar attendance. Their families have worked hard and we have faced these challenges together. We have truly persevered. Has it been easy? Nope. There's been lots of frustration, tears and poor quality time with family. And that is just the LaBakas family. This doesn't cover what my students experience, but there have been magical moments that we have connected in other ways. And I wouldn't be able to do that if I had all 22 of them in my classroom right now. I feel this is why they have done so well academically. They received targeted instruction and I specifically.
Jenny, you have about 30 seconds left.
Neither my lessons to their needs. Yes, I want to return as soon as possible so that I don't affect my 74-year-old mother-in-law. I want to be vaccinated. And my husband, who's the breadwinner, also needs to be vaccinated. So thank you, Petaluma community for your recent response in the Argus Courier poll. Teachers do want to be vaccinated. We want to come back to school. I feel a sense of pride with PFT working with PCS and thank you for keeping everyone safe. Thank you for your time and energy.
Okay. Ashley, did you see any other students in there?
That was the only one I saw.
Okay. All right. I think next up is Shalow Selna wants to speak about South County.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? All right, perfect. Thank you so much. So I'm speaking tonight on behalf of several South County Consortium educators. We collaborated in the development of this statement to be read tonight for the board members and the Petaluma community. As a return to campus approaches, we thank the board for including access to a full vaccination series as part of the requirements for special education return. Life skills programs such as those in South County Consortium serve students who are not able or willing to abide by the county health regulations, such as wearing face coverings and maintaining social distancing. Many of our teachers and staff provide toileting and medical interventions during the school day. Having access to a full vaccination series ensures that our teaching staff, students and their families can remain safe while still providing the crucial and needed services that our special education students need. They need specialized academic support and access to the vaccination series helps ensure our safety while providing it to them. Thank you for including access to the full vaccination series as we want to provide the best and most appropriate program possible for our special education students. And with our teaching staff vaccinated, we believe this is much closer to a reality. Thank you so much.
Joanna, really quickly, can I make a motion to maybe, not combine, I don't know what other people's thoughts are, but combine public comment with school reopening and non-agendized items because I with school reopening and non-agenda items, because I think we're calling on people who end up talking about school reopening, so it's kind of not fair to make everyone else wait. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'm just going by what people are putting in the chat, but are you, do you want to make a motion to combine?
So are you saying to just go ahead and just do it all? Now?
Not necessarily all, maybe still come back and let more people comment, but-
Joanna, how many more appear to be on non-agenda items?
Not very many. I mean, well, no, there's, I don't know, I'm just going off of what people put, and some of them are very general, so I'm not sure.
Two, maybe three.
But then also I don't, but I know that some people are waiting to comment on that on the end, so I don't want to do it now, because if people come back.
There's also a time limit that we've set in there. And so if we kind of divide them up, then everybody should have enough time to speak, because there's a lot on there.
And- So I'll just keep moving forward. Jenny Griffo?
Hey, everyone. It's nice to be here tonight. I'm here tonight as a former sixth-grade teacher raised by a single mother who taught elementary school most of her life. I spent the greater part of my life volunteering, tutoring, and working in public schools both throughout this country and globally. And the one consistent thing I've seen in all of my work is the love teachers hold for their students and the shared passion for meeting kids where they are at with what they need to succeed. And despite the immense challenges of a global pandemic in a country that never left, and a county that never left the purple tier, in a state that ranks 44th in per pupil funding, we are doing it. We are educating our kids as best as we can. And in all my time of working in the field, I've never seen teachers or administrators working harder, adapting more quickly, and simultaneously feeling more drained. All of us are carrying a lot during this time, and teachers are carrying that, as well as the unimaginable task of meeting kids where they're at during a global pandemic virtually. We have teachers texting with students at 10:00 PM on a Saturday night, encouraging them to start showing up to class so they can pass. We have teachers building the plane of digital instruction while flying it and taking care of 30 complex people at the same time. And we have teachers taking care of their own distance-learning children while providing distance-learning for their other family's children. Tonight, I'm just here to say thank you to all the teachers, the administrators, the union, and the board for fighting for our kids and always serving and our kids. Our kids are showing up, struggling, surviving, and working so hard. They are setting history, and I'm so proud of them. So pleased to those that are pushing for reopening schools faster than we're prepared to, please know that we all want the same thing. Please turn your attention to the power you have. Vote for funding for our public schools. Ask teachers and administrators how you can help. Work in partnership with our educators. And look at your kid and tell him how proud you are of them. Thank you again to all the educators. Please, please stick with with us. We appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, next up is, well, next in line is Regina, but there was not there was no topic in there. Is what were you wanting to speak on, Regina?
Sorry, yes. I'd like to talk about possible conditions for in-person learning. What condition and the requirements that we currently have versus if we, if as a physician, if I as well as a mother, if I could talk to you about maybe changing some of the conditions that you are requiring for us to meet before going to in-person learning?
You have three minutes if you want to make your comment now, and then Gary or myself can direct you to who you can speak to about that further.
Thank you. So I'll go fast. So I've been in the community for 18 years practicing as a physician. And if you remember back in a year ago, the reason that we went into shelter in place is because we were concerned about having enough PPEs, having ICU beds, ventilators, all of that. And those conditions, I can tell you as a physician, have changed. We don't have those conditions anymore. We are able to treat our patients so much more effectively, and we, and Sonoma County has the ability and the space to take care of patients who have the virus. So what I'm asking is that we have to find a way to coexist with the coronavirus and have conditions where our children's emotional health, as well as their learning, are prioritized, along with our teachers' health and their ability to, their contractability of the virus. If, I also want to point out that the first vaccine will give our educators about 60% efficacy from getting the coronavirus, which is very similar to the AstraZeneca virus that Europe is getting in terms of efficacy. So there's also talk about Pfizer only using one vaccine going forward to, because the efficacy is so high. So the the question here is, would one vaccine be sufficient for us to return back to school? Whether we need two vaccines to get from that 60% to that 90%. And then the other question is, two weeks after you get the vaccine, we are, have our unity. So the delay of waiting for four weeks, I don't know where that, if that's based scientifically based. And so, and then the other part of this is, as Blue Shield takes over the vaccinations, educators are the, are prioritized. So when my turn platform comes on, is launched, then in March, on March 7th-
Do you have about 30 seconds left?
Our educators are going to get prioritized very early in March to get their first vaccine. So I'm requesting perhaps a change in the conditions, allowing our children to go back to in-person learning.
Okay, thank you. And if you want to follow up with an email, if you have more that you'd like to discuss, that'd be great. Next up. I'm going to go with Avan Campton. I don't know if I'm spelling that right, A-V-E. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that right. It's spelled A-V-E-N, last name K-A-M-T. Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. It is Avan. You got it right. Um, I wanted to briefly, I don't know if my, if what I said about socializing upon return captures all what I want to say, but I'm just going to let you know. I wanted to address the social skills that I keep, that I hear many worrying about during this deadly pandemic. I teach a life skills class at Casa Grande. My class includes students with moderate to severe disabilities. I have been working with a group and the district on providing a reopening plan that was discussed earlier. What is being discussed at the present, present is having my high school students return and the first group of students returning in person, along with elementary students. What that means for my students is that they would return to cost, to the cost of campus as the only students in high school that will be on campus besides two small cohorts that will have no interaction with my students. There will be no opportunity for my students to socialize with their general education peers at school, because general education students will not be on the campus. So as an example, I would be teaching in person to my class on campus. When my students have a class in general ed, they will be in my classroom while I am teaching online, and they will be zooming into the general education classes from my class into the general education class, because the general education class teacher is not on campus and is continuing to distance teach with the Zoom and not in person. As far as I know, none of my students' parents are willing to risk the safety of their children or risk the health of my staff or me, and will remain in distance learning for good reasons, too. Many of my students have underlying health conditions. A former student of mine passed away this past Thursday at the age of 14. This was not COVID-related. However, it shows the vulnerability of this population that parents and politicians are pushing to have back in person. This does not make sense to me. School, when we return, will not look like it did in February 2020. There will not be socializing in the same manner that we knew before. I love my profession. I love teaching, and I chose well for myself. However, I also choose, after two deaths in my family from COVID, and 11 family members, including teachers, having the virus to be safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Sheila Morrissey.
Hello, I just wanted to start with expressing my support for the school board and all you're trying to do, and the teachers. It's a mess, and you guys are doing a really good job. Thank you. I wanted to make a statement to appeal to the leadership of Petaluma, including the city council and the Petaluma Police Department. We have a problem in Petaluma. There's an undercurrent of racism and white supremacy in our town. It has probably always been here, but it has bubbled to the surface in recent years, and something must be done. The only way to work towards a more inclusive and equitable town where all are welcome, appreciated, and respected is through education. The schools cannot do this alone. None of us operates in isolation. This became evident to me as I witnessed some youth in our community attempt to harass and intimidate BIPOC community members and their allies. Due to the fact that the perpetrators of these actions were minors, and these incidents took place off-campus and after hours, not much was done to discipline or educate them through restorative justice. There are, however, laws to protect our students. Title VI protects our students and states that students have a right to feel safe at school. When harassment interferes with learning, makes people feel unsafe in their homes and neighborhoods, and is allowed to continue when the authorities do nothing, students in the community do not feel safe. Petaluma City Schools is attempting to address, address this through a variety of measures. The school boards in town need the support of city leadership. It is past time for the schools and the city leaders to come up with a plan. Racism, hate speech, intimidation of marginalized groups are all issues that we must deal with in our town. We can only help our youth learn and grow to become citizens who care about and respect each other if we work together. A first step is for the city leaders to make a statement in support of the efforts many of the schools are making to create safe spaces for a diverse range of students and their families. This could be the starting point for further efforts to confront and dismantle the rhetoric of those hoping to divide us. I would urge you all to find substantive ways for the city to work with our schools to help teach our young people to do better, to be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay, next, Freya Sharp?
Hi, I'm Freya. I teach kindergarten at McNear. I've been at McNear and in the district for almost 20 years, and I have to say, this is the craziest. I think you guys will probably agree. I've been to every school board meeting this year, and I just want to add some positivity to the public comments by sharing some appreciations that I've had this year. I served on the distance learning committee last summer and a couple of the subcommittees, too. Since then, all year long, as you know, staff and teachers, administrators, we've been working on implementing and adapting distance learning. We've continued to talk and think about hybrid learning as things keep changing around us. And now there's a focus on school site safety as we prepare to bring children back onto our campuses. There's been a level of collaboration this year that I really haven't seen in recent years at PCS. And I'm hopeful that that's something we can continue to hold on to as we move forward from this. As a member of the community, I want to appreciate the board and the administration for holding the pieces of this really challenging puzzle that we're finding ourselves a part of. As a parent of a fifth grader in the district, I'm thankful that the board values and hears the voices of all the PCS families, not just those who are brave enough or who can speak at board meetings. And as an employee, I'm very appreciative of the value that the board has placed on the safety of staff at PCS, especially as we move towards coming back together at our sites with so many of our colleagues, our students, and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Freya. Okay, next. I don't see much on here that does not have to do with school reopening. So I guess we'll save all those till the end and move forward. Reports on activities and correspondence of the school board members. All right, so this month, or I guess the last two weeks, budget advisory committee, Circle Up training, opening school Zoom, CHIPPA mental health work group meeting, constituent meeting, LCAP, K-12 curriculum meeting, budget committee, and SCO board member boot camp. Okay. Comments from the public on consent agenda items. I believe we covered this earlier. Gary asked, but we'll open the chat again for a minute or two and see if there are any comments on the consent agenda.
Consent agenda is items 10.1, 10.2, all the items under that, 10.3. So comments specifically to 10.1, 10.2, and 10.3.
Okay, I see there's another student here. Can we close the chat? I'm not sure who No Name is, but since there's not a name, we will not be calling on that person. Let's start with Kiara.
Hi, my name is Kiara Monte Hano. I'm a junior at Petaluma High School, and I wanted to talk about mental health. I have struggled with anxiety for multiple years now, and each year it only seems to get worse. When distance learning first began, my mental health dropped very quickly to a whole new low. I developed mild depression on top of my anxiety and suffered from multiple anxiety attacks daily. My mental health began to affect my physical health, and upon further investigation, I found I was not the only one. My school has also recently released public results sharing information on topics having to do with distance learning from surveys. 800 students responded to the survey. Over 500 reported higher rates of anxiety. 330 rate reported raises in depression. 192 reported serious at-home struggles. An undisclosed amount have reported relapses in not only drug and alcohol abuse, but also cutting and other ways of self-harm. This is all directly linked to distance learning. My question to you panelists is asking you what you're going to do to help people like me and people who have it worse than me. We are hurting not only mentally but physically. And because that is directly linked to distance learning, I feel that it is partly your responsibility to help us solve this. Many students do not feel comfortable talking to counselors, teachers, or other staff members about such issues while in-person school. And many more, including myself, do not feel comfortable doing so online. That's it.
Okay, thank you for speaking. Okay, Ellen, did you say that you saw more non-agendized items? You're muted.
I thought so at the very top.
There were some people put their name in twice. They put one thing in and then they later put in something related to the resolution, which is why they were not called on initially.
Okay, and I also heard you say you're not going to call on people who don't put their names in, so.
You have a comment from Mr. Soper on Tomsky's presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks. I appreciate you opening that up. I have chatted multiple times. I'm not sure if the entire board sees that. I see that Ms. Pond does control who speaks and I believe that was purposeful and intentional. But we can move on since I now am able to join. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I do want to thank Mr. Callahan and staff for the presentation tonight on the school reopening plans. That transparency and report was excellent and that's, I think, what the public has been waiting to hear. We're very appreciative of your extra time that you put in to get those items submitted. Thank you very much. Dr. Randeve, if you're still on, you're the doctor for my 90-year-old aunt. It was nice to hear from you and it was nice to hear some science behind what you offered regarding Resolution 2021-14. It's a very emotional time for everybody and so your addition of some medical science was great to hear. I did want to speak and thank whoever brought Ms. Tomsky to the discussion tonight. Ms. Chacon, I know you and I have some experience from two years ago regarding discipline and it was quite refreshing to hear her speak. I wish they would have had her two years ago. It could have saved a lot of time and frustration for Petaluma Junior High School. But the same board was seated during that time two years ago and I think it speaks to the maturity of our board that we still have to have that same presentation and listen to the same discussion regarding discipline that hasn't changed and that has cost many families a lot of time and money in this district because it's not followed. And I am hopeful that at some point you guys will let her speak about board member discipline and social media conduct and bullying in the same kind of. You do have board members that participate privately in online chats. You have board members that participate in bullying students and adults. And I think that the district needs to bring her back for that same level of discussion. I would encourage you to investigate your board members that participate privately in Indivisible Petaluma and supervise their discussions regarding families and students in the district. Looking forward to Resolution 2021 tonight. I hope there's better discussion about the FDA vaccine and the science behind it because it was fully missed in the last meeting.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm done. Thank you for your time, Ms. Pond.
Is there anyone else that we missed, Gary? I know, again, some people put more than one comment in, like our last speaker. So I'm going back. They put in one thing, but in school reopening, I'm just going to assume it's about school reopening, which that was. Let's go through it again. Sorry, was I muted? If Jackie is still here, we can bring them up. It just says non-agendized item.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Got muted.
Can you unmute her? She got muted.
I tried. Jackie, can you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you No Name? Wait a minute, are you No Name?
I'm not No Name. I'm Jackie and there's plenty of comments in this section. I photographed it. I've already distributed it. Joanna, you are so out of line as the board president right now. Nope, don't even speak because I have some comments.
Can you please mute her, Ashley? Yeah, she's.
No, no.
No, yeah. So I'm going to ask that you make your comment specific to an item of discussion. If we have a policy that I read previously, if you have a complaint against a specific employee needs to be made to their immediate supervisor. Go ahead.
I would like to address the board regarding outside behavior and activities as it relates to students they govern. It's been well documented that several of the board members have participated in what one could only describe as cyberbullying tactics levied by board members to not only members of the Petaluma community as a whole, but the students they have sworn an oath to protect. I find this behavior abhorrent, especially considering the board has been working to hold students accountable for their off-campus behavior. To correct Sheila Morrissey's comment, as far as the students showing up earlier, there were boys who showed up to exercise their First Amendment rights. One of your board members took it upon themselves to leave the position that they were in and go towards these boys and engage them. It is on video. Post that, that board member proceeded in participating and helping to identify where these young boys live. Another board member also participated and could not keep it together enough to say that they would be welcoming and engaging in restorative justice because, quote, "Any engagement with that, I would catch a case." Insinuating that they would have so little self-control that they'd be arrested for anything that may occur between them and those students. Another board member took it upon their personal social media account and posted pictures of students under their governance in an effort to publicly shame them and encourage social media harassment, but not before violating the sacred confidence of their mentee. I wish I could say this was the only time that an incident like this occurred, but it was and it's true display of lack of ethics.
You have 30 seconds.
As far as this situation goes, I am well within the belief that you have violated massive Board Brown Act violations. I believe you've been consulting with Indivisible Petaluma. I believe that you chose people out of it's I've been, we've been watching. These are not the only people. So we've watched you pick people out of the comment section and I have photographed.
Your time is up. Okay, moving on. Let's find another non-agendized item.
I don't believe there are.
I'm not seeing any.
It's really hard to say. I mean, yeah, so I think that's.
Okay, so approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I propose.
I'm not even going to talk about it. This is good.
All right, any comments or questions?
No. I'm really excited for the new childcare work that's being done at the, right by the McDowell site, getting that building back from SCO and putting our own spin on it with the matching grant funds. I think that's great.
Anyone else? Maddie, really? You have nothing?
Nope, not tonight. I just, something just broke. I have to.
Okay, yeah, no problem. All right. Moving on to comments from the public on action items. I will reopen the chat unless, if there's someone else that wants to comment on action items. So the chat will be open again. If you've already put your name in, we've noted it earlier, so you don't have to put it in again.
So you have well over.
Yeah, we have a lot.
You have about a, you know, a minute's worth of comments from each individual.
Okay.
Hey Joanna, there was something here on graduation. I don't know if that's part of the reopening comments.
I think we could probably close the chat. Joanna, you're.
We'll give everyone like a 10-second warning if you want to go ahead and get your comment in. Okay. So since we have so many comments on this and we typically stick to a 20-minute limit, but I do want to hear what everyone has to say, we will give every person a minute to speak. So I believe we have a student here, Mia O'Brien. She may be under her mom. Mia, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Mia, go ahead. You have a minute.
So my name is Mia O'Brien and I am a high school senior at Casa Grande High School. Parents have spoken out regarding their concerns about keeping kids out of school, but they are currently being ignored. But students are the most directly affected by the school closures. Coming from a student's perspective, school is something important and should not be taken away from us. Teachers, counselors, and other staff have claimed that they have it rough too, but they can't directly understand where we're coming from because they got a shot at their senior year. I am one high school senior out of 400 at Casa Grande and my voice is not being heard. We're being cheated out of one year of our school, the year that we've all been waiting for. Everyone's main argument is safety. Got to keep kids out of school for safety reasons. But one safety that is being ignored is the mental health of students. Since the start of distance learning, suicides have increased significantly. If we're really focused on safety, let's focus on the rise of suicides.
Okay, thank you, Mia. Next is Lynn Calza. I think I'm saying that right, C-A-L-Z-A.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me? Yes. Hi, my name is Lynn Calza. I am the parent of two kids at Casa Grande High School, a freshman and a senior. I'm also acting treasurer for the East Side Friends of Music, which is a Casa Grande music booster, supports surrounding schools that feed into Casa as well. You may have also seen me in the news lately as we've been making and donating thousands of cloth masks since last April. In light of recent controversy, billboards, and arguments, I wanted to speak in support of the current school board and superintendent Gary Callahan. I feel the safest way to protect our teachers, our children, and our families would be with the most obvious starting point of getting our teachers, staff, and administrators access to vaccinations. If I were a teacher, I would refuse to go back into the classroom without a complete vaccination, whether it be one dose or two. Everyone wants our kids back in school, but even after our teachers and support staff are fully vaccinated, I still have great concern for the safety of my kids, my family, and everyone at the school who will be exposed to this virus. I think that attempting to force education system to open without a solid plan, without vaccinating our educators and support staff.
It's been a minute. I'll give you 10 seconds to finish.
Thank you. And without being solidly in the red tier of this pandemic, we are asking for bigger problems. Information about this pandemic seems to be changing almost daily. So forcing this issue without a viable and factually-based solution is only going to create a nightmare that will shut the county and schools down again for longer.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I have to cut. I'm going to have to cut a lot of people off. I apologize. There's a lot of comments. Okay, next up is Carlos Salazar.
Hi, thank you so much. I want to start with addressing trustee Quinn. Thank you so much for recognizing in the beginning how unfair it was that the folks that were talking during public comments were 100% talking points from Indivisible Petaluma and it was completely out of line. And thank you so much for jumping in there and trying to correct that. I really do appreciate it. To VP Labakis, shame on you for using your children to get to the front of the line and then have a, basically an advertisement from.
So we asked that comment about a specific employee be made to their immediate supervisor. She is one of our employees. So you have 30 seconds left.
I am referencing her as the vice president of the teachers' union, not as an employee of Petaluma City Schools. To Kiara, Mia, and the young lady who talked about the Lady Trojan sign, good for you guys for speaking up. You know, appreciate you guys sharing your voices and being out here as students. Finally, a thing I actually wanted to talk about, to the board, thank you guys for listening to. I know that I am part of the group that has been pushing you guys hard. Myself and my family have been called white supremacists for doing it.
10 seconds left.
Joanna, you let the indivisible people talk. Please let me talk. What I want to tell you guys is thank you for listening to us. Thank you for pushing through this.
Your time is up. We have to move on to the next person. We have a lot of people on this topic, so we have to move on. Patricia Lunibus.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Great, thank you. My name is Patricia Lunibus and I am a special education teacher at Valley Vista. And I have been teaching in Petaluma City Schools for eight years and I come from a family of teachers and I have been making the most of distance learning and I am thrilled to be able to go back and provide continued support for my special education students this year, hopefully. I want to thank the board, the district, and the union in supporting all of the teachers to have a full exposure to vaccination so that we can go back and provide safe instruction for our students, their families, and for myself and my family. So on behalf of my family and my students, thank you very much for your support and I'll defer the rest of my time to somebody else.
Okay, thank you. Next, Jessie Feller-Hahn.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jessie Feller. I'm the parent of a kindergarten at McNear Elementary. I'll try not to break down and cry tonight like I last did at the last school board meeting. I, just as background, I really believe that science and data should drive policy decisions at the local, state, and federal level. I'm, my motivation for attending tonight is really about my son Finnegan and advocating for his needs as his mother. I'm super grateful for the update on the reopening plan today. Thank you guys for that. It's extremely helpful. I also really appreciate the ambitious summer school plan for our TK second graders as well as aftercare considerations. And thank you to Jason for holding a meeting with the kindergarten parents from McNear last week to clarify where we are and everything. This is like a huge moving target and misinformation is a big problem. Really encouraged to see the school board submit their reopening plan and encouraged to see more emails from you guys and PCS since the last school board meeting with updates on where things stand. So we have as much information as possible. So thanks for addressing our. So thanks for addressing our concerns there. It's, we're definitely in an educational crisis, so it would be helpful to see if possible the chat.
Jessie, you have 10 seconds left.
Great. I'd just love to see the chat publicly open so we can really truly see the conversation as a community since we really don't even know who is attending and how many people are on these school board Zoom calls. Just a suggestion for format and also great to hear from Brian DeFor, but I really would like all of us to understand what criteria needs to be met to reopen to full schedule.
Thank you, Jessie. If you have any questions about that, you can just email Brian directly. His information is on the website. We have to move on to John Matern. M-A-T-E-R-N.
Hi there, thank you. My name is John Mattern and I'm a teacher in Novato and a parent of two daughters in Petaluma. And so I thought my perspective might be interesting because I am a teacher who is back in the classroom in Novato. Once the CDC released their most recent guidelines in February, Novato shifted their strategy and all teachers are going to be back in the classroom by March 8. I'm currently not vaccinated and to be honest, that makes me a little nervous. But the more I've learned about it, the science is telling me that COVID is just not being spread in the classroom. So my hope is that Petaluma can revise their current plan as well. I'm wondering if you want to keep the vaccine requirement. I totally get that. But do we have to wait the four to six weeks and then also return to the hybrid model? Or can we just return to the classroom? I'm super reluctant to even be speaking tonight because I never want to tell other people what they should do, especially teachers. But as a teacher and as a parent, I know that online is no substitute for in-person learning. And the sooner that we can get back into the classroom, the better. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sean Millard.
Can you guys hear me now? Cool Beans. My name is Sean Millard. I'm the band director and visual performing arts department chair at Casa Grande High School. I, like everyone else in the nation, want my students back, especially as a band teacher, as I'm sure you can imagine. I'm in the process of getting PPE ordered. We have it, some of it. We're getting, I spoke with Brian DeFor this morning for a while about getting back to extra stable group rehearsals after school, so we want to get back. Even today, I met with my trium band student leaders and we had a very difficult and heart wrenching discussion on the perils of band and distance learning. It was heartbreaking, but I'm grateful to my students for their resilience, their patience, and their courage. I was also in the distance learning and hybrid scheduling committee this summer and this fall and this winter and worked with Cliff DeGraw, Jason Sutter, and a host of amazing colleagues throughout the district. Believe me, teachers are working their tails off to get back safely as soon as possible. I just wanted to take this moment to show Gary and the board and everyone in the district admin level that is supporting teacher physical safety. Thank you so much. I completely support you and the resolution as it current stands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Sean. Carrie Cottle.
Hi there. I'll be quick. I teach kindergarten in first grade. I used to teach seventh and eighth grade. My husband is also a teacher and my daughter is an eighth grader. I just wanted to say to the public, we are in the home stretch and this has been quite a haul. It's been super hard for all of us, everyone in my family, but we're almost there. So if we can just sort of hold on a little bit till we get these vaccines, I think we're all, we've just come really far in being all together. As a community, we have a lot of like ways to go, but that's the first thing I want to say. The other thing I wanted to say is I also have friends who are educators in other counties and Sonoma County is having a rough go of it. So what I want to say is maybe we can also try to get creative, like in addition to waiting for SCO. Maybe if anyone has other ideas for ways that teachers can get vaccinated, let us know. My friend just told me that there were, there was like a bunch of extra vaccines in San Francisco Walgreens today. I don't know, I'm all about getting creative at this point. My last quick question is if we are planning to go in a tiered system like K3 and then 4, 5, and then go so on and so forth, can we please vaccinate in that order? That is all.
Okay, thank you Carrie. Next is Beau Rutter.
All right, thank you. I want to express my fullest gratitude to you for continuing to the school board of Petaluma, for continuing to prioritize teachers' health by making sure we have been offered a full course of vaccination prior to return to the classroom. I miss being in the classroom and cannot wait to be back with the students I work with. I miss them so much, but I want to say I'm very grateful that our school board values the lives and health of the teachers and communities we serve. In this final stretch before we are fully vaccinated, I hope you continue to ensure that we do not jump the finish line at such a pivotal point and potentially risk community health and the trust of educators. I want to let you know this particular issue hits very close to home in my heart. I lost my father to COVID in November. My father died as the result of one individual knowingly exposing him to COVID when this person should have been quarantining per COVID protocols. My dad was gravely ill, spent almost two weeks in the ICU, and died in the hospital of this awful disease. Within three weeks of diagnosis, I held his hand as my own heart broke. I will never be the same as a result of this trauma. Some people may not feel this way. Anyone who can say they haven't lost someone to COVID or haven't been affected by this disease as I have are truly fortunate. As a result of the precautions and steps we have taken as a community, the decency and the decency of people who follow science and public health recommendations, many people have been spared. I hope you are grateful for this and hold your loved ones tight. It would break my heart if anyone I knew had to go through what my family and I have endured these past few months. You as the board of education have made the decision to prioritize community health by having our teachers fully vaccinated before returning to the classroom. In summary, I am publicly stating my support of this decision and I look forward to returning to a classroom full of students as soon as this is accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Goodman.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry. Okay, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the board. Thank you so much for supporting teachers, for being such patient listeners. I'm speaking tonight as a teacher and a parent. I teach 10th, 11th, and 12th grade English at Casa Grande High School and I'm also co-department chair for the English department. I also have three students in Petaluma City Schools. I have a first and fifth grader at Grant Elementary and an eighth grader at Petaluma Junior High. So I want to express my gratitude for their teachers. They're masters of their craft. I'm blown away by their ability to serve each of their students. They've shown incredible empathy and creativity during this time. And I know that like me, they are yearning to be back in their classrooms. They pursued a career in education because they love connecting with students and that connection is definitely harder to achieve in distance learning, but still they've persevered. My kids are learning, growing, and even enjoying parts of this otherwise solemn year. When they've struggled, their teachers have been flexible and understanding. I just want to express my gratitude that our current plan ensures that teachers will receive both vaccinations for COVID-19 before they return to the classroom. Teachers want to get back into the classroom. Parents want their students back in the classroom. We want to return to a life of normalcy, but our wanting isn't enough until teachers can protect themselves, their families, and their students. The distance learning model is the best option.
I've got 10 seconds left, Sarah.
I just, I'm really grateful to be part of a community that's doing our best and to echo what someone else said, we're in the home stretch. Can we just hold on to make it safe for everybody, including the parents of these students that we can prevent exposure to by having the vaccine?
Thank you, Sarah. Next up is Ryan Meston.
Is Ryan, did he, did they write down, are they under a different name?
No, I don't know. It says Ryan Meston in the chat.
Looks like it's under Amy M or Amy M.
Okay.
Hello. Yeah, hi. So I was, I was hoping this was going to be a forum where I could get a response, but I just wanted to ask a question about the reopening of in-person learning for the junior high and high school students. I had heard that it had been mentioned that when, once returning to the red tier, that the county approval for the COVID plan didn't have to be, didn't have to be approved. They just had to have a plan in place. But I didn't hear whether or not there was a plan in place for specifically the high school and junior high. I only heard that it was submitted for the lower grades. So that's all I was asking about.
So if you have a question about the safety plan, you can email Brian. Question about the schedule, Cliff or Jason. So moving on. Nathan Leipka.
Thank you. Right now, it feels like the only thing we have control over is how kind we can be to each other and how to care for each other in whatever capacity we are capable during this once in a lifetime pandemic. I'm privileged and thankful to live in Petaluma and work at Casa Grande High School. As we all know, the health of our community and the health of our schools are inseparably intertwined. Even in normal times, our school system is a leading factor in why families choose to make Petaluma their home. We are a town that works hard to improve and take care of each other. The acceptable number for preventable deaths from this pandemic is zero. It is sad to think that a higher number might be worth the risk to some, especially when a vaccine is available to more and more of our community by the day. And while we have no control about the pandemic's effect across our country, we do have a choice in how it impacts us here in Petaluma. One way that Petaluma showed their care for one another is by electing you, the members of our school board. During one of the most difficult times in our collective lives, it has been even more evident that we made the right decision voting for you. Together with the leadership in our district, you have been navigating continuously updated information and guidelines from the federal, state, and county, and you have kept our community safe. I encourage fellow community members committed to reopening our school safely to seek out and read the freely available documents that guide our reopening, specifically those.
10 seconds, Nathan.
County where we live. Be sure to read the documents on the reopening and contact your county, state, and federal representatives. And please consider applying to become a substitute teacher if you are able. The newest national guidelines recommend that our students and schools will need all the help that we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Next up Dana Gootlieb. Sorry, I'm probably not pronouncing that correctly. G-O-T-T-L-I-E-B. Thank you, Ashley.
Hi, I want to thank the board member and the school administrators, everyone, down to the custodians, the lunch servers who are now running the distant learning cohorts, everybody who's working so hard. I'm a parent. I'm also a reading specialist at two different schools. I have never felt so much like a first year teacher after over 20 years of teaching. We are all working like crazy. At the same time, um, I do not want to return until all of us have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. On a personal level, my father-in-law died shortly ago due to COVID. My kids no longer have a grandfather. My father doesn't have a father. 500,000 people across the, or not country, but 500 deaths just, you know, this week across the country. I don't want it to be more. I miss the kids. I can't wait to see them. But if anybody has ever been in a classroom with little guys that I work with, there was a lot of snot and no amount of masks and everything is going to keep all of that. We can talk about the science, we get, but kids are kids, adults are adults. We want to get close to each other. Let us come back and be with the kids and love the kids when it's safe for us to do it. Thank you.
Thank you Dana. That was exactly a minute. Amazing. Next is Sandy Sullivan.
Hi, my name is Sandy Sullivan. Thank you for taking my call. I have written a few emails and have gotten very little response to my questions. So I'm going to put some of them out there right now. First of all, I want to say I come from a family of teachers. I very much support our teachers. I also come from a family of first responders who have been out there working since day one without a vaccine. My sister who teaches in Novato has been in class, in person, teaching without a vaccine, without problems for many months now. I find it unreasonable. I don't understand why we haven't had a plan in place. Marin Counties had plans in place. They've adjusted them along the way when the guidelines were changed. And I want us to be ready to go at a moment's notice. These kids are suffering. They may be doing okay in their grades. They're not doing okay personally. They need to be with each other. They're fine to be with masks in class. It's been proven and it is safe out there. It's time for everyone to get to work and get back to work and help our children. They are our future.
You have about 10 seconds to finish your thoughts, Sandy.
That, that's all I have to say. They need to get back and you guys need to do your job to get them back.
Okay, thank you. Michelle Anderson.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. I am a grant school second and third grade teacher and I wanted to take this time to thank the board for all of the hard work you have been doing to get our students and teachers and all personnel back on campus safely. Administration and teachers have worked for a year to prepare for the day we will be able to get back into the classroom. It is important that we continue to follow the protocols that we have made together. Vaccines are an important part of this plan. Personally, I do not feel comfortable going back into the classroom until I am fully vaccinated. Sonoma County Office of Education is working hard to get all personnel in schools vaccinated as fast as they can. Being in the classroom with my students again excites me. Even if I can't get next to them and give them the high fives, the fist bumps, and the hugs that they so badly want. Please keep the resolution as it is. We can get through this together. Again, thank you board for working together with the administration, teachers, support staff, and parents to help us get back into the, back onto our campuses safely.
Thank you, Michelle. Sumaya.
Can you hear me? Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sorry, a bunch of us nodded, but. You as the board are supposed to represent the children. Either you are not hearing them or you're not listening. Our children want and need to go back to school. We all understand that the pandemic had serious implications to the health of many people, including teachers and staff. But through all of this, with all the scientific data we have today, there is absolutely no reason for our schools to stay closed. It has been months and months. We've had entire summer and winter break to come up with a solution to allow these children to come into these schools, whether it be hybrid or full-time. The CDC released guidelines on how to open K through 12 schools for in-school learning safely with key support services, which the board failed to take advantage of. The American Federation of Teachers and the CDC.
10 seconds, Sumaya.
Major vaccinations is not a precondition for school reopening contrary to your resolution. It can also be seen across the nation that children have returned to school and those school districts are making it work. There's no reason nor excuse that the board district can come up with to keep the kids from getting back to school. Your resolution is for.
Thank you. We have to move on. We have a lot of people still. Ashley, can you? Thank you. We have a lot of people. We can only give a minute each. Okay, Paul Stephens.
Okay, hi. Yes, I'm a teacher at Grant and also at Carpe Diem, a resource teacher. I just would like to take a moment to thank both Gary and the board for their support for the health and safety of the people who work in your schools. I fall in the high-risk category, so I greatly do appreciate you not making plans that would have me be rather nervous going back before I'm fully vaccinated. So I appreciate that very much and I hope that would continue. Also, just kudos to the district staff for the robust distance learning program you put into place in the district learning committee. And also for all the ancillary programs you have for the students' emotional well-being. So I think that's a lot of hard work, so excuse me, we do appreciate that. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Joan.
Lynn, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Should we come back to them or move on? Can you unmute them?
I can only ask to unmute.
I can only ask to unmute.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. They might not be there for it. Shannon Peterson.
All right, I think I muted myself. All right, I want to first start off by saying thank you to the board, the district, teachers, staff, everybody that has worked very hard this year. Trust me, I am a teacher in the district. I teach at Petaluma Junior High, and I also have two young kids at Valley Vista. I can't say enough about how hard these teachers have worked. Not sure if you've seen, but a new study from the CDC has come out on Monday stating that teachers and school staff were the probable source of several school-related COVID-19 outbreaks. Not students. The study published Monday highlights the importance of maintaining masks and social distancing guidelines within schools and the immense need to prioritize teachers and school staff for the vaccine. Changing the resolution right now will put everything on the backs of teachers instead of us as a unit, instead of the board, the district, teachers and staff. Teachers will be 100% the bad guy in this situation instead of someone who is supposed to have the most trust from their students and families. We will be the ones.
You have 10 seconds, Shannon, to finish your thoughts.
I appreciate everybody's hard work. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, last name W Y R E.
Amy, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello, this is Amy Wire. I am a second and third grade teacher at Valley Vista and a parent of a third and sixth grade student at Valley Vista. I wasn't planning on speaking. I just wanted to give you guys a comment and just say thank you so much for all of your hard work and the teachers and the parents are very grateful for all that you do. That's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the cat. Cat with a C.
I'll double check. I don't see cat. No, I don't see cat.
We have Will Soper again to talk about school reopening.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pong. Can you hear me? I didn't notice whether you could hear me or not.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan, thanks again for grabbing a hold of public comment. That's very obvious that it's being controlled by a board member tonight. I would like an investigation into how public comment is controlled, what board members see it, and why the public can't see who is speaking and what order people are speaking in. It is way too blatant tonight that someone on the board is controlling speakership. Regarding the resolution, I really do hope that the board will discuss it tonight. It's improperly documented regarding FDA standards and it needs to be revised, I believe, to be legally upheld. It's a very emotional subject. I get it.
You have 10 seconds left.
I would appreciate the board discussing the science. Emotion has been very heavy tonight. Thank you.
While I don't usually comment on things like this, as a secretary of the board, I will tell you that we're we are following and making sure that everybody has an opportunity to comment. What happens is because people put their public comment in areas that were most of the people that put their chat comments were related to the action item. However, they signed it under consent or they signed it under non-action items. So we've had to reorganize them all, but everybody's getting an opportunity to speak. There is no magic order to any of this. We're literally going right down the list. So I guess I hate to to it is what it is. We're just going down the list, just like we do every single board meeting.
Thank you, Gary, for that clarification. There was just a first name Katie under high school reopening plan, but I see that there's two Kates here. Did either of you want to speak?
Well, I'm just trying to find it in the chat to see if they have a different in blue. There's a lot. I don't know if you can see, John, is there another name listed in blue for Katie above where they typed it?
No, I don't see that. I think, yeah.
Should I just open both of them up?
Yeah, let's open them both. Katie, Katie Hatwick. Is that Tori? I think Katie is a student. Katie Hatwick or Katie Pisciotta. Sorry, I'm not sure to say your last name. Did either of you want to speak? If you did, unmute yourself. If you don't, just stay muted and we'll move on to the next person. Okay, I'm going to take that as you do not want to speak. Next up is Tara Hazen.
Hi, my name's Tara. I'm the librarian at Petaluma Junior High. Can you guys hear me? Okay, so my only experience with a school that's reopened is through my nieces who are in kindergarten in Turlock, and they're on a hybrid plan. And I just want to tell you guys that they've had two outbreaks in their class cohort, and they've been kicked back onto distance learning for 14 days each time that that happened. And unfortunately, another byproduct of being kicked back onto distance learning is my mother, who's their grandmother, can't help with childcare once they've been exposed. So I think we need to think about what normalcy is going to look like, even if we do go back into a hybrid program. And I just, I want to say we're so close to teachers being able to be vaccinated. And for me, that makes me feel so much safer, and I think that that will impact the way that I can be present for my students, right? When I'm interacting with them, if I know that I've been vaccinated, that just removes a lot of anxiety for me. So I just, I was so appreciative that you included vaccination in your reopening plans, and I hope that you will continue to do so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tara. We have Renee McGardle.
Renee, you should be able to unmute now.
Renee, are you able to unmute yourself?
Hi, can you guys hear me now? Sorry about that. I too, like some of the others, thought that we could actually ask questions. This is my first time commenting. I'm just hoping that moving forward, there can be much more transparency in the plan. There is so much confusion and so many different so much misinformation about what the actual plan is when teachers get vaccinated, which I fully support. Is there four to six weeks before schools can reopen? Why is there four to six weeks? So I'm, I think that there's so much miscommunication. If we could be provided more of a plan with a timeline to help people understand, you'll hear a lot more, a lot less noise from parents. I think it's largely a part of not getting enough communication about what the plan is.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Gary, do you want to clarify real quick about why we can't respond during public comment? Just because it's come up a couple of times.
Well, it's an it's an action item. And I mean, you could, I mean, you can respond during the, if you want to, to once you get through the entire, as part of the action item. We can respond to some of these. I'm taking notes as we go through. I think it's just right now, it's just the totality of the of the responses here, where you need to get through everyone. And then we can, we can start picking them up, picking off some of the questions.
All right, next up is Diane Wilmeth.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Hi, Caitlin. She was my sixth grade student. Hi, everyone. My name's Diane Wilmeth, and I'm the Old Adobe Teachers Association Union President, your next door neighbor. I'm speaking tonight to address the approval of the resolution that is tied to vaccines. I know it's approved. As a long-term member of the Old Adobe Unified School District family, I have found myself contemplating various decisions and battles which we have had to overcome and fight this past year, many of which are a direct result of COVID-19. It is a hard and challenging time for all of the constituent groups, which have been directly impacted by the many decisions which are out of our control. It seems that we may now be entering a time where teachers' voices matter the most. When is the right time to return to in-person instruction? What are the surrounding Sonoma County districts planning to ensure that so that the health and safety for staffs and students is a priority? Tonight on your board agenda, you're all addressing this resolution, a plan to return to in-person instruction, a plan that is not a negotiated nor agreed to by your certificated union group. This resolution.
10 seconds, Diane.
The message to the parent community that upper management and the board is ready to have teachers, support staff, principals return to work. So I would implore you, our unit wants the vaccine before we return to work. We're your neighbors and we need to work together.
Thank you. We have to move on to the next comment. There's still quite a few left. Okay, Liz Carrasco.
Hello, my name is Liz Carrasco. I'm a mother of two students at Cherry Valley. I don't envy the near impossible decisions you have been tasked to make. Please continue to build a safe and equitable plan for both students and teachers to soon return to the classroom. I know that some are requesting this board reconsider criteria regarding teacher vaccinations. Just yesterday, AP News reported on a new study within a school district in Georgia, finding that, quote, "teachers may be more important drivers of COVID-19 transmission than students," end quote. While social distancing and masking guidelines will safeguard our students, our school staff must also be afforded a reasonable expectation of safety in their workplace. This in turn helps to ensure safety for all students. A commitment to respecting teachers' health concerns shows that we value both their voices and their physical lives. Accountability and constructive critique are vital to this process. Thank you for listening to and considering the many viewpoints presented. I want our community to know that though we don't see every step, our district board and staff consistently work to bring students and teachers back into their classrooms within the confines of constantly changing rules, guidelines and recommendations from a variety of sources.
You have 10 seconds, Liz.
Discounting this work disparages our teachers, administrators, school and district staff who have worked harder than ever this past year and are actively preparing and rolling out these plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Next up is Sandra Larson.
Can you hear me? First of all, I want to thank the board and Gary and district administrators for working to keep us safe. We do appreciate that. I am the proud president of the Petaluma Federation of Teachers. I want to let you know that Petaluma, I can't talk, Petaluma Federation of Teachers has 98% membership of all that are eligible to join. That means the federation are the teachers, the teachers are the federation. I also want to ask that we stop saying things like it's time for teachers to get back to work. That is insulting. We have worked very hard this year. Our members are willing to come back and we want to come back as long as we have the safety of vaccinations. So it's best for our students, it's best for our members, and we strongly support the resolution as it is written. I want to say you can look at Sweden to see what happened to the rates of COVID. Teachers that taught in person as teachers who taught distance, they had four times higher rates. You cannot say it doesn't get passed in schools. We are in the purple tier for a reason. We have a high rate of disease. Other counties, we're beginning compared to are in the red. It's not an equal comparison.
You have 10 seconds, Sandra.
Saying vaccinations are happening, the end of the tunnel, we can see it. We need to hold on and make sure all our members come back safely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melissa McGary.
Here we go. Hi, I'm Melissa McGary. I am a teacher at San Antonio High School and a parent. I have a sixth grader at McNear and eighth grader at Petaluma Junior High. I understand that there's a million different situations families are struggling with right now. My own kids are struggling. While we find creative ways to make sure they're getting their social needs met while following public health guidelines, I think safety is most important. I appreciate the co-curricular activities that McNear has introduced just recently. I'm part of the performing arts team. And while I help with Zoom groups, I have seen that these activities are very small, controlled and held outdoors. I know how important it is to get kids back in the classroom, but I do not believe we should go back to the detriment of our community. As a secondary teacher, the idea of going back without being vaccinated makes me feel very vulnerable. There's a huge difference between having small clusters of students on campus for clubs and sports and a third or half of the student body moving class to class.
You have 10 seconds.
Who want to compare teachers to essential workers, but the logistics are too different, and that is not a fair comparison. I want to thank the school board for protecting our community and our families. The vaccine is here. Let's get vaccinated and keep our community safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Ashley Amaral.
Hi, can you hear me? Awesome. I'll keep it brief. I am a physical education teacher at Casa Grande High School. I am also married to a teacher. I'm a mom of two Old Adobe Union School District students, and I live in a multi-generational home. I apologize. To say that COVID is not an everyday topic in this house would be an understatement. I want to thank the board and the district for taking teacher feedback and concern for both students and faculty safety into consideration. When we open school buildings, again, I want to feel safe standing in front of my students, and I want to do that without faking it. I want to be able to make them feel safe. And I appreciate you keeping the resolution the way it is and allowing us to be vaccinated. I know it's not an invisible cloak or cape, and it's not going to protect all of us, but it will at least allow us to breathe a sigh of relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Next, we have Sal.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, um, yeah, so I just wanted to quickly say that's great to hear that PCS is kind of looking into retaining aftercare for working families to the greatest extent possible during hybrid learning and hopefully as well as safe spaces to connect to the internet and focus on school for students who need it during distance learning periods. Because that's going to still, as we know, be part of the hybrid learning schedule. And by all accounts, the distance learning centers have been very effective in addressing educational. And by all accounts, the distance learning centers have been very effective in addressing educational inequities. And students and families need to continue to have access to those supports. So thank you for you know, having that be part of what's being worked out right now. And also just wanted to express strong support for the board members and the district and teachers and everyone who's been working so hard to safely bring students back to school. They're, you know, as, as we've seen, there's just been countless hours of just like meetings and phone calls and collaborative work and problem solving that everyone has been engaged in and trying to move the district forward in a very complex situation involving many different needs. And so just want to acknowledge how much work and thought the board and the district have been putting into this and express appreciation and support. Thank you.
Thank you Sal. Next, we have Ruth Hanson. Is Ruth here? Ashley, do you see Ruth Hanson?
Do not.
Okay. Next up, we have Kevin and Harriet Johnson.
Hi, can you hear me? Thank you very much. My bottom line upfront is basically to ask if we can opt into the California Safe Schools guideline that would allow an option that allows for the return on campus for those who need it most, meaning either just the kindergarten students or just the high school seniors, while keeping the structure you have in place for others. Hi, I'm Harriet Johnson. I'm a mother to three children who are currently in the Petaluma City School System and I'll have a TK coming in next year and I work in the pharmaceutical industry. While I, I also want to say I'm encouraged by the additional details brought to light today and I look forward to specifically reading the safety plan that has been put forward here because that transparency is very important to me as a parent. And while I appreciate and generally agree with the comments from many to get back to school as quickly as possible, my daughter needs consistency. It took her months to get settled into distance learning and we're finally in a good place. The proposed changes eliminate after-school access to teachers for everyone. These office hours have proved vital for my child and give teachers a chance to connect with students one-on-one.
You have about 10 seconds Harriet.
Okay, so the long story short is if we can focus on opening for everyone next year and look to our most small, you know, look to the most needed populations right now, like those kindergartens and those seniors, and use them as a pilot before we go full scale with everyone next year. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have Brent Newell.
Evening. I want to thank the board, teachers and administrators for all your hard work. I am a parent and professionally, I'm a lawyer representing meat processing workers during the COVID-19 pandemic. I speak from some level of experience on these issues. I want to adopt the position and support the union's request to maintain the vaccine requirement in the resolution. I also wanted to discuss two facts that are extremely important as you proceed. It's important you have a legal obligation to provide a safe workplace. You also have an obligation to provide a safe place for students. And as you proceed, there are new variants of the SARS virus that cause COVID-19. And these new variants are more contagious. Experts believe they will become the dominant SARS variant in the United States by the end of March. They are more contagious and your plans now are essentially fighting the last war. You need to be thinking about fighting the next war because it's new.
You have about 10 seconds left Brent.
Finally, with respect to the Moderna vaccine, it prevents the onset of COVID-19. It has not been shown yet to prevent the transmission of SARS to other people. That means teachers, families, that means students. So you must take those two facts into consideration as you move forward.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Susan Thompson.
Hi. Thank you for showing tonight how reopening schools is clearly not a slam dunk. And to that, I'd like to ask those who are pressuring the county to reopen schools, how is a billboard on the one-on-one and yard signs helpful in this moment? Creating animosity only makes getting through these tough times more difficult. We will get through this, but please don't make our schools and wonderful teachers the scapegoats for our collective frustration and COVID fatigue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Susan. We have Molly Lunibus.
Hi there, I just wanted to say thank you to the board for all your hard work and thank you for all the leadership. And I'm just saying I'm in support of the current resolution to be fully vaccinated before we return to school. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Tiana and I'm not even going to try to attempt her last name.
Hi, my name is Tiana Gresbek. I've been a teacher in the district for 17 years. I'm also a parent of two PCS students, one in junior high and one in high school. I witness daily the struggles and successes, yes, successes, students have had this past year on both a professional and personal front. I want to go back to in-person learning. I want my students and sons to go back to in-person learning. Most importantly, I want to be safe for all of them and myself in doing so. When the board passed resolution, I was pleased to see that the school board prioritized the safety of my students, my family and myself. To amend this resolution in any way gives me pause and concern. Since March of 2020, I have witnessed the way this district has worked tirelessly, diligently, and effectively, together on plans for so many unknowns. I was pleased when the current resolution was passed as this was one known we could follow. I support the returning to school while putting the safety of our students and staff first by maintaining our current board resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tiana. Next up is Matt P.
Hello, thank you. My name is Matt Peterson and I'll pile on by thanking the board for the district update. I don't envy the positions you were all in. I have two children at Petaluma City Schools who are very much looking forward to getting back to school to be with their teachers and friends. And my wife is also a teacher at Petaluma Junior High. Personally, I'm very excited for the time that they could all get back to a safe learning and teaching environment. My statement is based on the CDC K-12 School Operational Strategy for reopening. There are five core mitigation strategies that must be followed to reduce the transition of COVID-19 in schools to remain safe and they include universal and correct use of masks, physical distancing, hand washing, cleaning and maintaining of healthy facilities, and contact tracing. Although I didn't hear any of these addressed on the meeting tonight, I have to assume these topics and their potential resolutions have been spoken about within the board and are part of the strategy on reopening. My question is this, while teachers largely, while largely unvaccinated, who is expected to be enforcing these strategies? I ask this question from a standpoint of an employee of a multinational corporation who has strictly enforced zero policy, okay, thank you, zero harm policy for all operations that we perform. All in-person meetings of the company are heavily scrutinized, blah, blah, blah. So my questions are, at the district level, is there more staff going to be brought on to police the correct use of masks or monitor physical distancing? Or is further staff going to be hired?
Sorry, thank you. Get out your last question.
Is further staff going to be hired to collaborate with the Health Department on contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine? These are no small tasks, yet I fear the answer to these questions is a resounding no.
Next up is Sarah Sass.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for all for being here tonight. I echo the comments of others, I do not envy your positions right now or anytime this year. I can't tell them how hard it's been. I'm excited to hear that the safety and reopening plans are moving along and very encouraged by some info you guys shared earlier in the meeting. I appreciate hearing from the physician who called in earlier about vaccinations. I urge you to listen to the professionals, listen to the science, listen to Kiara who called in earlier. It was brave enough to speak about her declining mental health. Dr. Fauci, President Biden, and epidemiologists are all recommending that students return to classrooms swiftly and safely. On that note, George has been brought up a lot lately and I'm so happy that it is because that is a perfect case study as schools that are opening without, not in a safe manner. It's great to, we've seen a lot of schools that open safely. That was a perfect example of a school that was not opening safely while COVID spread was 300% growing in that community, 300%. We have not seen that kind of case rate in our community with schools open. I understand teachers want to be fully vaccinated. I understand they're nervous to increase their exposure to the virus. This virus is terrifying. I think that educators are the most valuable members of any community and I can't imagine how much harder their job is.
You have about 10 seconds left Sarah.
Even though I don't have a vaccine, I volunteered to help with the SCO vaccine clinic. Please consider returning to the classroom after one dose or at least, very least, remove the four-week period after they've had their second dose. Preschools and daycares have been open this whole time and please, I have a question very concerned about that our surrounding school districts seem to have received a lot more money in COVID relief funds. I hope that you guys can discuss this when you guys open the action agenda or the action item. And Adobe received 1.1 million.
Thank you. Next up, we're getting to that. We have three more. We'll be two people who want to speak and then we have one written that Michelle is going to read. So we'll go with Kylie.
All right, thank you very much. I'm Kylie Chikini Haynes. I'll be real quick. I have been a teacher in this district for 31 years. I have literally had thousands of students and I'm assuming many of them are listening to me right now. And I just want to say that I have spent my career showing my students how much I value and respect them and I think they would, they would agree that that is true. And I just want to say to the board, thank you because your resolution has shown that you value and respect the teachers. And I, I just really, really appreciate that. So that's, that's all I want to say. And I want to be there after this is all over for my students for some more years, another five at least. And I appreciate, I appreciate your support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Aiden.
Hi, and thank you. I'm the last speaker. That's awesome. And so I have a few things to say as a parent of three kids in your school system. Firstly, I want to say I'm a little bit disappointed with the district. I feel like there's a lot of scrambling right now. You guys have, you know, avoided some of the work that should have been done earlier and are now coming out with a lot of communication suddenly after a lot of parents are kind of a little bit frustrated and upset with what's going on. I also want to remind our school teachers that I truly love. I have had the best experience in Petaluma City Schools. My kids have had an amazing time. I've got three kids and three different schools in your system and it's been amazing. But childcare workers have been in since a year ago nearly, working with children. And those children are the children, little babies who are, who are vomiting and puking and all these different types of stuff on their teachers. And second, I want to say, last I want to say, 75% of our elementary schools, and thank you to Sheldon who pulled that out in tonight's meeting, want their kids to go back to school. So I'm asking you as a district, please, work harder. Do what you need to do.
You have 10 seconds left.
Okay, 10 seconds. Get our kids in full-time in the fall, please. Thank you for listening to me.
And I was mistaken. We have one more speaker left, David Felix.
Thank you. I know everyone's been at this for a while, so really appreciate it. Obviously, a lot of emotion in this. I think we're all probably concerned about the same thing here is the timeline, right? We're kind of rapidly running out of school year. And it's unclear whether teachers are going to be able to be vaccinated or not. So I guess I would just ask, and it sounds like you all are probably, you know, considering the path forward here, just maybe consider the timeline that you all adopted the resolution, resolution on January 26th. And not even a week later, our cases dropped below the threshold of 25. And they've been there thankfully, below 25 for the last 20 days. So it feels like we're just going to be in this position pretty soon where once the plan has been approved, that we're all going to be kind of sitting around waiting for vaccines. And, you know, watching our kids kind of continue to struggle. I guess I'm speaking specifically from a father of two young kids, kindergarten and third grade. And just, you know, hopeful that you guys can
You have about 10 seconds David.
Try to be creative and think about solutions, maybe things that you can, you know, do to get kids outdoors or other, other possibilities. And just realizing that our case count is so low. You know, I think Petaluma on average has been about 12% of all the cases in Sonoma County. So with our current case rate, that's about eight new cases per day. So it's
Okay, Michelle or Ashley, do you want to read Linda's statement? And did I forget anyone? Did you guys see anyone else?
I'll read Linda's statement.
Okay.
This is from Linda Judah and she says, "I would like to thank the board for prioritizing safety by making staff vaccinations a condition for return to campus. The recent Argus Courier poll showed that a majority of Petalumans agree. As much as my freshman would love to be back on campus, she and we would rather wait until it is safer for everyone in our community to do so." Thank you.
Okay, that is public comment time. All right, so, action items, review of amendment to resolution 2021-14.
Let's have a chat about what we've just heard and what we've been hearing for the last, you know, month on email. I was actually a little bit surprised by who showed up tonight. I was expecting, we didn't, we didn't see our two competing petitions that are going around. I thought we would hear from those, get a final tally on those. Anyway, just acknowledging that tonight we saw a lot of support for keeping the resolution, but at the same time acknowledging on email, especially in phone calls, we've been getting the other side very clearly and loudly. I'll start by just saying, you know, what I'm choosing to hear are, you know, people's frustration and, and desire to have their kids in school. And I appreciate, and that's all we can ask for our parents to do is to advocate for their children. I want to emphasize publicly that our resolution does put us on the path of getting to hybrid. We are headed to hybrid. And then after that, as Gary mentioned earlier, we are going to, you know, we're headed to full-time in-person. We're headed there. The division that we seem to be facing is win. That's really it. And as the last speaker pointed out, you know, the pressure is ramped up because, you know, the time left in our academic year is running out. And so anyway, I just wanted to start by just acknowledging that that's what we're debating, I think, is the win. And yeah, I'd want to hear from my colleagues too.
I am. I, I don't have the resolution in front of me unfortunately. But the idea of revisiting, we put in, you know, after people are vaccinated for weeks and that seems to be a problem for a lot of people. I heard a lot about, you know, why all those weeks? So do you have it in front of you Maddie?
Yeah, it does, it says, because I don't think it says that, yeah. That that's part of
I just shared it.
Okay, that they'll shift to hybrid instructional model no more than, no more than four weeks following. Okay, so I don't, the, the vaccination piece.
I'm having, I'm just looking right. I'm having, I'm just looking right now.
Is not in that part.
Okay, it says.
Right above it, Maddie.
It says, no more than.
This is the four weeks is, is in the third and be resolved. It's at the end.
Yeah, I see it.
Strive to implement the following reopening sequence. Oh, if conditions number one, number three, number two, and number three listed above have been met, you're right. But that just says, that's just logistic. My understanding is that it's just that it's no more than four weeks.
Well.
It's not like, is that your, I mean, it's not like when we get vaccinations and we have to wait four weeks.
No, my point is, is that. I guess. It's, it's a, it's a problem for me in, in putting those four weeks and six weeks. If we're agreeing that, that teachers need to be vaccinated, I think everything else is pretty much in place. We've done the surveys, we've turned in our plans. We have the, the air purifiers and the PPE and, and all that other stuff. So. Why would we need? Four weeks? I know it says no more than, but.
So you want to take that piece out?
I'd like to.
Well, I think Jason and Cliff spoke to this. And Brian, there needs to be time. Like, yes, we have everything, but what are the logistics behind that? Like setting up the, the classes, like we don't have the classes set, right? Like we still haven't talked to every parent who has, like not every parent's filled out the survey.
It sounds like a lot of schools have, because they've made follow-up conversations for parents that haven't. I just, I don't think we need.
So what they, they, they've done the family surveys. Then they have to do a survey on childcare needs. And then they have to do, then they have to form the learning groups like AMP, MDL, hybrid.
All that.
And then they set the class groups.
If, if, if the only thing that you are doing is you're changing the. If you're looking at one and two and three, which I think you're looking at, which is the after and be it further resolved.
Right.
Then if that's the only change that's making, then all that does conditionally is say that the first group that's there, the TK, K1, 2, special ed and ELD, they would go in one, one group, they would go together. And then the second group would be the secondary, and they would go together. Because if that's the only thing you're changing, the nature of how vaccinations are offered already staggers it. Does that make sense?
That's my point, so.
But it doesn't, you wouldn't need to change your resolution because it's already there. It just says no more than.
This is the ceiling, not the floor.
We wouldn't be, yeah, we wouldn't be going, it would, we would start immediately after. More likely than not, it's.
Immediately after. What?
After the vaccinations.
After the access to the vaccinations.
So, and, and how is that going? I mean, I, I know that the, the weather in Texas kind of really threw things for.
We're behind. We're anticipating that the first, the first large block of folks are K6, this special ed secondary, ELD secondary. We're anticipating that slots will begin to open up for them on February 8th. To.
Me March 8th?
I'm sorry.
Long night. Gone there, Gary.
Yeah, March 8th. And the anticipation, I mean, it's really hard to say. There's, there's a reason why that the SCO vaccination site does not give dates. You will not find dates anywhere because it's all speculation. But the best speculation would be that it would be March 8th and the first dose for for other secondary teachers would probably not be till the 29th of March.
But Gary.
Just dose, that's what, that's dose one. So March 8th, from there, for the elementary, you'd have to go out for weeks. And then you're looking at April 5th at that point, I think that's, or no, that would be more, depending on when you got your dosage.
Yeah.
It could be April 12th.
Haven't some teachers, haven't some people already gotten their, their first shot?
Not really, not, not, not for the intensive purposes of the people. The only people that have received from SCO, the only people that have received their doses are people that are working currently with stat, with students. So some of our classified staff, very few certificated staff. We do have some staff that apparently have gotten their, their vaccinations elsewhere. But that's, that can't, I can't confirm or confirm that who they are. We don't, we, we don't, we can't track that particular thing, there's.
And when spring break over?
The 12, the week of March, April 9th is the last Friday of the break.
Yeah, they come back at 12.
Yeah, they come back to 12.
So you're looking at, so you have.
You know, I, I think it certainly feels like the way things are moving, especially with vaccinations, is that there's been delays, stops, you know, the county versus the SCO, they took our vaccines, and so that put us back. But it does feel like everything is pushing. The, the governor says they're going to give 10% of vaccines to teachers now. There's districts throughout the state that are saying we're prioritizing vaccinating teachers, and we'll be back at that point. There's, there's Johnson and Johnson is coming out with their one dose. It's supposed to be hopefully approved on Friday. They're ready to send it out. Whether our state and county get it or not, I don't know. But it sounds like the whole push, including the, the push nationwide, is to vaccinate teachers as soon as possible. So to me, it just feels like there's political pressure to do that. There's, you know, pressure from everything to do that. And so I just feel like it's going to happen. I, I choose to be optimistic. And that it's been a complete mess for a long time, but that it seems like it's working now towards you know, positive movement that, then I, I, I don't, you know, we have those two weeks of, of spring break. If we, if we have the, if we set a date, I think it's really important to set a date tonight. I think that's what everybody wants to hear. That's what I heard from people. And then planning can happen. They might not like the date, but you know, I may not like the date, but I think a date needs to be set.
And I would propose that it be that Monday after spring break.
That's what I was thinking.
And I think that as far as like finding out who needs childcare, I mean, we have plenty of time to do that. You know, it's, it's. If we, if we do it the Monday after spring break, everybody will have at least one shot at that point. If not, their second. And I just think, and that leaves eight weeks left of school. You know, and we got to get those kids back in the classroom this semester at some point. And I think that spring break, the end of spring break is a really good cutoff point. Say, this is when we're going to start.
Are you saying that for secondary April 12th or for everyone?
Well, secondary can't even go until we're in the red. So if we're, if we're in the red, because that's the rule with secondary, right?
Right, but I mean, like our, because I think the, I think.
We're anticipating we'll be in the red in the next couple of weeks. If that.
Right, so then April.
Right, that's part of our tier, you know, part of our tiered strategy was to deal with the logistics, the challenge of rolling out.
Yeah.
So are you, are you thinking 12th for that first year or for the last year?
I was thinking of April 15th for elementary, for TK.
April 12th?
Yeah, April 12th.
For a secondary?
No, TK.
Oh, I couldn't hear, because you said.
Just elementary, whether we do TK through six or TK through second.
Why, why just, if, if we're pushing it that far, why just elementary?
Because I want them to have the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. And I don't think we will have secondary fully vaccinated. And they are the most at risk in terms of the, the amount of, even at three classes, there's a lot of co-mingling between classes.
But the timeline looks like we should have them fully vaccinated by April 12th, right? Secondary?
Well, I thought Gary said they don't even start until the end of March.
But then.
Because if they start with the Moderna vaccination, I mean vaccine, the, it's a 28 day. And that's the only, I, and that's the only thing that's being offered. I don't understand the supply chain at all.
No one does.
Have tried to understand it. I can tell you that other counties, other school districts, they've had the option of, if many of them have had the option of both Pfizer and Moderna. Pfizer's a 21 day.
And they have prioritized their teachers.
If they start through, if they start through one vaccination cycle and a single dose comes up, they're not, they're not eligible for that. They have to complete the cycle with what they, what they receive. So. It's.
But then.
You're either putting conditions or you're putting a date. It's, it's what, and that, I think that was the issue that led it coming back to the board. Because I can't give you a date based on the conditions because of the unknown related to the vaccination. So it's, it's kind of.
And we have two different dates for the different.
But I'm just concerned the high school, the secondary will never get back if we.
I, I think when we originally made this resolution, it was in thinking, right? That we were going to actually get the vaccines that the county said that we were going to get.
First.
We were also very deep in the purple. We're starting to move now towards the red. So it's, it's hard to continue to tie the reopening to the vaccines because the vaccines are unstable. Like what if, I don't know, there's another hurricane in Texas. I mean, it's Texas, like another hurricane tomorrow. No, seriously. And then they don't have, we don't have vaccines till May or June. So. So it's hard to continue tying it to that because again, like the same that we're not in the same conditions with the spread, right? We're not as widespread. We're in purple right now, but we will be in red very soon. We don't have the same conditions with the vaccine that we thought we did a month ago.
So we're, we're, we're kind of put it in perspective where if we, if the schedule that was initially set was followed. In other words, if the, if the county had received their allotment they were told they were going to receive and didn't, and this, and this week didn't occur, our elementaries would have gotten their first dose this week.
Right.
Which means that we would have been looking at plus minus the, the eighth, the eighth for the second, the week of the eighth.
They did announce that the, they're going to, you know, double up on all of the vaccines that were delayed. So that the delay is possibly not going to be as severe as they thought it was going to be. Can you get rid of, I'd like, I can't see everybody. I don't, I can't see Joanna, I can't see Caitlin, there you are. Thank you. I don't know. I think, I think it's going to start ramping up, but you know, as I said, I'm optimistic.
I'm just afraid, I, I just like the idea of going back to school after spring break. I know we initially talked about staggering it, but I'm just afraid if we put off the secondary, they'll never get back. And I, I have a hard time with that.
Logistically, what would that?
Yeah, that's what I was going to.
What would that look like, Cliff or Jason or Gary, any insights on that?
So what would happen would be that they would take, they would take the remainder of the year and they would split it in half and probably complete, whatever the number of weeks are, it'd be split in half. And half of the coursework would get done, followed by the next half of the coursework that would finish up. So half of the coursework would finish with finals, half of the coursework would finish with finals, something like that.
But I mean, logistically, from the sense of, could we, I think what Ellen's suggesting is starting TK through 12 at once.
Is that possible?
It looks like you just got on fire.
I mean, anything, I mean, it's, it's possible. You're, you're.
I'm not sure it's wise, you know.
Yeah, wow.
I mean, it's, it's. Yeah, I mean, if, if there's a date, you're going to run yourself into a unique situation that that the reality that athletics is going to be out and about, and students are not going to be back at school. That's going to create a really interesting issue.
Well, we already have extracurricular and co-curricular things going on, on the campuses.
Yeah, but.
You know, there's, I know it's not as extensive, but.
And not everyone plays sports either. So it's like Newsome just opened the door for all the athletes to go back. And then, I mean, so to say that kids can play sports but not go back.
But not go to class was kind of hard, a hard pill to swallow. I mean, the co-curriculars that they were talking about is, is, is not a bunch of football players in a huddle. You know, um, so I don't think you can compare.
There aren't that many kids on a football team.
Well, I, I don't know anything about football, but I don't, I don't think you can compare the, the, the clubs and the little co-curriculars.
No, I, I just don't want to, I want this to be based on what's best for everybody. And you know, we're talking about bringing back 7,000 students and 500 staff. And if we're, it, it just seems, I, I don't, I mean, I, I'm not, I agree with you completely that I, I think we need to have a full quarter. I just don't know how how you open up like that. So, but you know.
Let's throw the ball at Jason. What do you guys think? I mean, you're the ones that have been doing the work.
As far as opening all at the same time, in the same day, that.
Yeah, I mean, have you been working towards like a staggered or the full?
Well, we, we don't have staggered bell schedules. Well, I guess for TKK we do slightly. But for everyone else, it's, it's basically a staggered window, right? There's a window of time before school. We're going to ask families to come to, don't call, don't come all at the same time in the last five minutes before school starts. That doesn't help with, you know, keeping students separate. But you know, it's, it's going to be like, it's going to be like it is, you know, pre-pandemic, right? You've got, if you've got families that have kids at multiple schools, they have to figure out how to do that and how to get one, one place and another, another place. It's just going to be back to how it was before. There's no, no real difference really in the morning.
The stagger is, the stagger is, it doesn't have, have anything to do with educational services. It has to do with human resources that, that you, you have to make sure you have enough teachers to staff the classrooms. And so if you, if, if you are, if you are running short, let's say that you, you, you roll out K12 in one mass. If you're running short, you want to make sure that your, your youngest have teachers in those spots first. And so it's just a, it becomes kind of a number thing. It's doable, anything is doable. If we have a, if we have a timeline related to that. You know, somebody brought up at the end, one of the, one of the, one of the, the public comment speakers about this scrambling, which was I, I had to chuckle a little bit when I read the Argus about PCS scrambling. I don't know what that, what, what, what they really meant by that. Because if anything, we were done with the critical work. We were only thing we were waiting for. We were only thing we were waiting for. Related to the CSP was the template. And then, once we got the template, we knocked it out in less than seven days. A pretty complicated template that people are still working on. Nobody's scrambling on anything related to this. Now, if you tell us to. To that we that we need to do a K 12 rollout. We would probably not even be scrambling on that because we'd have enough time to work on it. Now, we don't know whether we would be successful in the full rollout. Because really what it would mean would be. That when folks came back, if if. We just have to ensure that we have a a teacher for every classroom. And that we have a plan in place. To for folks that needed to go on to a leave. To take a leave to be able to do that, knowing that their job's going to be safe. When they choose to elect to return. And that we have a person in place to replace to replace that. And those are things that we need to know because there is a finite set of resources that are out there. In Sonoma County and Marin County of of staff. And we would need to start. Doing some hiring because we anticipate there will be some folks. That will choose to to. To pass. Don't even with a vaccination, because it because not everybody's going to get vaccinated. Some people if you are going to make the decision not to do that. That's just the reality. So. It's all doable.
So I'm. I mean, I I've I have a lot of.
Oh, no.
He's about to say confidence. And then he froze.
Total cliffhanger.
We're gonna win.
So Matthew, have you been, what's your take on the human resources end of it?
So from the human and human resources aspect, we did a survey for all of our for our certificated teachers. We'd have we've asked our our classified staff as well to send in information. Classified staff have until this Friday, our certificate staff. We sent out a survey that was due back late last week. Of our approximately 430 teachers, we had 363 responses of approximately 85% of our staff has responded. We, the question that was posed was really based on the resolution 2012. 2021 dash 14. So the question is, if these conditions are met, right? Which was the resolution. Would you, are you comfortable coming back to school? And and of our of our. Certificated staff. 89% of our certificate staff. Are comfortable returning in-person learning, in-person instruction for the remainder of this year, once the conditions have been met. 11% are not comfortable returning in-person instruction for the remainder of the year. So that 11% equates out to about 41 teachers. So that's 85%. So it's probably it's going to be a little bit higher of a number 50 50 in somewhere in the 50s. And of that, if we look at elementary, because we've been planning for a a tiered rollout, right? Starting with K 6 special educate. The special ed, our SDC, our South County Consortium, our ELD secondary classrooms. Of that group of the elementary, it's really about, it's really six teachers who have concerns. And some of those teachers are not even not even classroom teachers there or they don't have a caseload. It would more like there's some RSP. So we're really a very few teachers at the elementary level. According to the survey that would have that would struggle to come back or wouldn't wouldn't come back. So the elementary seems. From a staffing perspective, we should be able to move forward as long as the conditions are met, according to that survey. When we look at. Special education, South County Consortium, there's there's some higher numbers there, but.
But the but. Special, what about? Because there's going to be students that want to opt for.
Right.
Distance learning, so we need teachers to deal with that.
We're working through we're working through that puzzle right now. That's what Jason Jason was talking about. He's he. We we had a conversation this morning about it and working with one school just to see. What could this look like? So we're we're working through that puzzle.
So it sounds to me like if we switch from the contingency of vaccines to a set date. Matthew, you and the unions are going to have to start all over of, okay, now who's comfortable? Coming back and who's going to come back based on this start.
We would have to do a new. The conditions have changed, yeah.
Well, what it would be, it would be with the folks would need to make a decision and they would they would they would be sending. They would people that are not comfortable would be. Setting up meetings for leads. And then we'd have to total that number and determine how many, how many. Positions we needed to find for.
Well, it sounds like. If we wait till right after spring break for TK through six. ELs. And special ed, that they'd already had both of their vaccines by then.
They will have, it looks like. They will have access. Whether they elected to take it or not, but we you would have met your condition of your resolution.
That's what I was thinking.
I would like also, I would also like to say that I know the focus has been on certificated, which is certainly important.
Only all classified is right in there.
Right. Been working.
We have a lot of instructional. Staff instructional IAs that we have a lot of vacancies. There's going to be challenging challenges filling those. You know, we have to find bus drivers because. You know, that's a whole thing. I mean, so it's not just teachers, there's actually a lot on the classified staff too. Fortunately, the majority of classified staff on the operations side are working and have been working since March 13.
Plus all the instructional aides in the cla- in the cohorts.
So.
Do they have vaccines?
They're they're getting they're they're getting.
They're in the same class.
They're the same, the same.
Yeah, as everyone else.
Chris's point, what I was saying about the the survey, I asked, I gave them until this Friday to to respond, so I'll have more data to share after.
We also have a lot of vacancies because we've been able to operate. And I in a distance learning. Situation with far fewer instructional assistants. Then we're going to absolutely need, if not more, when we go back to a hybrid. So I just want to throw out there, it's not. It's not just about our instructional staff, our certificated staff, there's also a lot of classified stuff, especially in the area of special education that. And then you're breaking a class in two, so if you have an instructional assistant. Who works with TK and typically that's three hours a day. But now you've got two TK, you've got an AM TK and you've got a PM TK. So we've got to work through the logistics. Of what that means too, how do we do that? So I'm just saying there. There are other implications, it's not just teachers subs.
But we're talking, so we're talking like. What, six, seven weeks between now? And when spring break is over?
Is it that long?
Yeah, seven weeks.
I mean, the thing is.
What are you talking particularly about? I I'm the.
I mean, the thing is, is that we have. Two weeks of. One week of spring break and then a whole week of emergency days. And so that's what pushes it farther into April.
Yes.
And so, I mean.
Two, three, four, five.
So we have one, two, three, four.
We have seven weeks.
Four, four and a half weeks left until spring break.
Yeah, I'm including spring break, we have seven weeks.
All right, so not not to complicate all this, but. Secondary, we don't come back and we can't come back until. We're in the red.
Right.
Presumably, if if the vaccines, if it's the same, if this is applied equally across elementary and secondary. Secondary maybe in the red for. You know, more than a month. Or longer before. They even get the chance to come back. So just. That's going to be sitting out there and that just may be something, if that's what we decide that we have to live with, but.
You're you're probably looking at April 26 or May. May 3 for secondary.
But we can also kind of reasonably assume that. The elementary school teachers will. Basically be have both doses. And that the secondary teachers will have at least one dose. Which gives them a tremendous amount of. Protection, not not fully, but but a lot of protection with that, is that? That's my understanding. I don't know how that works in terms of condition, but. I don't know.
I think it depends on the, I'm I'm not sure, I know that it. It does depend on the.
The vaccine. They're both, they're both really highly.
I mean, they are, they are, they are, they, I mean, they're, if it's Pfizer, I mean, they're seriously considering. The efficacy of just one dose. Because it is coming out at the same level as Aster.
And I do think that Johnson and Johnson is going to be a game changer. Because they're they're actually been ramping it up. I read this morning that so is Pfizer and Moderna, that they're rap ramping everything up. But.
Yeah, but we don't know if we're going to get the Johnson and.
Well, I I think that we can just reasonably assume these things, maybe.
I don't think we can.
Whatever the county gets.
I don't think you can reasonably assume.
So then what are we saying, are we saying that we're not gonna? We're not going to have the condition of vaccinations in any way?
Well, I want to do a. She's been trying to talk for a while. Go ahead, Caitlin.
I honestly just think that removing. I'm I'm happy to clarify the language around vaccines. But I I don't see going back on. Trying to protect our staff and our families and our students, you know? I I've lost acquaintances to COVID, luckily no one's very close to me, but. Just because not everybody dies of it. Doesn't mean that it's not going to spread to our families. And staff and. Sorry, someone said not to get emotional, but that's me, I do that. I think going back on what. We've already set out, just makes it more complicated and sets us further back in a lot of ways. And I don't know. If I can do that.
Well, I think that at least for K 6, EL and special ed. We can say we can, you know, we can be cautiously optimistic. That after the end of spring break, it would be. Safe for those. Yeah, maybe, I think. I mean.
I I. I mean, at what point, I guess, maybe Gary or Matthew can speak to this. At what point with the language that we have now in the resolution, could we set a date? Or what would we need to know before we can set a date?
Well, yeah. The 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 date would be. You would be, you would be speculating roughly when. When a first and or a second dose are. Complete. And that's 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 all it would be, it was, it would be your your you're choosing to. To give, you know, give a hard calendar date. Knowing that's it's 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 it depends on what the when you set your date. If you set a day for for May 15, you know, you're worth nine, you're 100% likely that that everybody's been double vaccinated, but. I I think it's, I think what 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 the what the. The fundamental question, which why it makes it so difficult to do. Is you're weighing, you're weighing. Equal concerns in your mind. About health and safety and. Some really critical needs of students. And you're forced, you're you know, you're put in a position that no board should be put in. This this board should not be making this decision, nor should the board in Santa Rosa, nor should the board in Windsor, in Sacramento, in Los Angeles. Boards should not be making these decisions. And.
But yeah, here we are.
But but you have to, you 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 you've been, you've been charged to do that. And they can't even agree at the state level of what to do. So they may come, they they may, they may come in very likely in two weeks and completely. Excuse the the term trump everything. That has been been spoken to and decide this is a hard date. That thou shalt follow. So and they're because they were kind of bantering about April 15. Who knows, there were issues related to. To that, so. I think you're 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 hearing the frustration from parents clearly. You know, every, we've all heard that. We know that 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 for some students, this is not working very well at all. We also know it's working well for for other students.
Yeah, we've been getting a lot of emails today and in the past week.
Yeah, and and. It is. This is a divisive issue in the community. As as per, you know, public comment. And it's probably just going to continue and and only escalate at this point. I think it's what it's where, you know, what the comfort level of the board is. I think that. There is a large block of individuals that I have spoken to, families that. More than anything, more than anything else. Are concerned about. 21, 22. And. You know, there are detrimental, there are detrimental effects of 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 students being out. After a certain period of time and some of the things that are that that that. These kids are going to have to deal with in a long-term basis. The board didn't cause that, the pandemic. You know. People want to can't blame it, it's hard to blame blame a pandemic because it's not an individual. Right, it's easier to blame a person. But the pandemic put 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 us in this situation. But I think the real concern is going to be, you know, taking taking real tangible steps, meaningful steps towards. Towards towards reopening because we're going to have to, we're going to be managing, managing this thing for a long time. This is not just going, this is not just going to be two. Two vaccinations and then we're good and everything's going to be fine. There's going to be boosters and then there's going to be another booster and then there'll be another booster after that. And we were told that from the very beginning, if you looked at the data. So. And we're going to have to manage this and and we'll probably have to do more masking up much longer than people want to. To do that, but we can do that safely and and you know, our health. All the health indicators indicate that we can do that safely. And people feel very confident when certain things are in place. So I think we do need to to honor, you know. You know, we need to make sure that we're moving. Forward somehow. And in our path, and I think the resolution was a was a was a good step to to go there. It's it's now it's just a question of, you know, whether you want to keep it. As it is, or whether you want to to. To modify in any way. But I will say that the one modification is the. If vaccination stays as is, it already sets up a stagger. It just means, it just means that it would be a K 6 stagger. And. In addition to the the auxiliary secondary positions and then a 712 stagger.
So, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ellen, you had asked at the beginning, you know, our thoughts about like maybe everything starting at once. And I I know you guys have, this is a hard decision, as Gary just really put it very well. I think from like a logistical standpoint. Everything that we're doing is brand new, like every every time, every like situation is something we've never faced before. And coming back into hybrid instruction will also be that way. So starting. Starting TK 12 on the same day. I I could see would be a really, we could do it. It it would be a really hard ask, like we would probably have lots of problems. It would be smart to stagger it in some way that that we're able to do a piece and adding adding pieces in. Just so that we're making sure that we're that we're doing it the right way. And I'm not talking about a length of time per se, those are all your decisions, but just the one day start that you're that you had brought up that question about. I could see logistically, we could, we we could face some challenges.
What about like a two? What about like a two week? So we do TK through six, right? Um, on the twelfth, I think that's the date in April. Um, and the auxiliary. And then two weeks later. Assuming that we're in red and have been in red enough time, two weeks later, we start um. Secondary.
Yeah, I I think that's why you had in the original resolution, those weeks have staggered, knowing that we'd need to stagger it out. So that's all I'm advocating for is is what if you decide to change that. Having some kind of stagger is in the best interest of our students and our teachers.
What about TK through six auxiliary? A week later, we go, we do middle schools, junior high.
The way the language is set up now gives us the flexibility to figure this out and do. What is best? And, you know, if. Within a week, all of the TK through second grader teachers are vaccinated. That means we can get them going right away.
Yeah, so the relationship between the stagger.
But we don't know who's getting vaccinated. We can't know that.
There's, they're staggering them by by their, what they teach.
I know.
They're getting vaccinated.
But we don't know who's getting vaccinated and who's opting not to.
Oh, oh, oh.
We will never know that.
And it's not in the resolution that we need to know that.
Well, I know that, but what I'm saying is, is that, so we don't know if all the TK through second teachers will be vaccinated at a certain time. Do you know, do you see what I'm saying? If we can't know if they're getting vaccinated, we won't know when they're getting vaccinated. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I kind of sound, I'm, I'm really tired.
As it relates to the, to the, to the stagger, it's not about a length of time. It's about us having a stagger because what happens is. If if you want to make sure that you you have all of your, you have a teacher in aids for all of those students. Once you have that in place, then you can immediately go to, go to your next group because you're dealing with the same pool of of adults. That are, that are, that are, they may be long term subs. It's the same pool. So you have to fill, you fill your, your, your TK six first. And then you look at, at, you know, where, what are those, what are those gaps that you have? In those other grade levels, and it may very likely be in that situation that you could, you're ready to go at seven, eight. Um, until you immediately. Can can move on that. It could be as short as a week. To do that. It just depends on, and it, or it might be even the reason even, there is even a scenario where it could be, say. San Antonio is ready to go, so they go. So once you're ready to go and we know that transportation is not collapsing because we still got to transport kids.
Right.
You know, we've got all of these other things that food that 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 we didn't have a collapse with transportation, with food services or something that was unexpected. That's the, the first group is just a, a, we need a couple of days to make sure. That nothing unexpected is taking place. We just don't know what that's going to be. Um, but it doesn't have to be a set time. It's really dependent on how, you know, we would go as quickly as we could, but as thoughtfully as we, as we're able.
Sheldon, you were rudely kicked off. What were you going to say?
My district laptop dropped me off. Switched to my other computer.
Name it on the desk.
Um, I just wanted, uh, you know, I wanted to propose to make a compromise of some sort, you know? What we control, I feel very comfortable with, with, and what we control is our safety protocols on our campus. I feel very confident about. What our site staff and our district leaders have been set up for our safety protocols. And, you know, what I'm hearing tonight is about seventy five percent of our families at at the T, at the um elementary level want to come back. And uh, in athletics are going to be coming back, looks like. And then uh, we're headed towards a red tier where the um case count is is low, which is an additional layer of of safety. Oh, anyway, where I'm headed is uh, I'm a compromise that sets a date that um. Uh, starts the stagger. And and a date that uh, we reasonably expect right now will allow for at at the very least, the first vaccination for our teachers and and probably the second. And so um, and then, and then we also have to consider, you know, if we, if we do go to red right, you know, very soon now. Uh, you know, how that changes the timeline. But anyway, the, what I was thinking was. Uh, setting the date of the twelfth of April for uh, the first tier and maybe move in. In in the next two weeks, the two subsequent tiers, so TK to two. Uh, the twelfth and then three to six, the nineteenth. Seventh to twelve, the twenty sixth, if we're in red for for that last one.
I would like to see.
Throw that out there as an idea.
I would. I would like to see TK through six on the twelfth.
All at once, or those two at once?
Just get those elementary, because by then, you know. I know that some teachers have been vaccinated. I've been vaccinated. Um, I got my first one on Valentine's Day. Um, and I'm in a classroom, but. I just think that if we can do the elementary and then stagger it the way Sheldon said with the following week, we do maybe. Middle schools and then the following week after that, we do high schools. So that would be the twelfth and nineteenth and the twenty. Twenty six, thank you.
In all likelihood, if if this, if things go the way they are right now. We're gonna be in the red and with at least the first shot for our teachers coming back. So those would be two layers of safety on top of the the protocols we've set up and hope, you know, and for some teachers, they'll have the second.
That was what I was thinking, Sheldon, all along.
The twenty six just feels late for.
It is.
It feels really late. And again, like, we don't know what's gonna happen with these vaccines. I I think, like, the vaccine should be part of our decision, but it can't be. The majority. And I mean, we heard from a lot of people, the students we heard from, they want to come back. You know, like Sheldon, you mentioned like a compromise, like. You know, maybe even if it's the first round. Um, and like, I mean, I'm torn too. Like Caitlin said, I don't want to go back on what we already wrote. Unfortunately, the circumstances have changed. We're getting closer to red and we don't have the guarantee of the vaccinations.
When we wrote that resolution, we had full expectation that the vaccine would show up before we dropped into twenty five.
First.
And and now it looks like we're gonna be in red before the vaccine shows up.
That's not our fault or our staff's fault. That doesn't change the pandemic, whether we have vaccines or not.
Yeah, it's not our fault. No, it's.
No, but it's.
Changed circumstance.
It's not our fault, but it's reality.
I mean, we maybe uh, maybe not have two weeks in between. Like have the April twelfth and then have the next week be seven through twelve. And then that. You know, you. It it staggers it somewhat. Jason, does that help your? Or Cliff, does that help you guys with? And 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 Matthew with getting um enough? Does that give enough time?
Well, what would take place is, I'm not gonna put them on the spot. I'll take it because it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't.
They're not all right.
Put them on a spot.
Well, what it would mean would be is if we had a date that, I'll just throw any, any date out there. If we have a date, we are immediately um. Doing an audit and finding out which positions we need to fill. And we would go through the process of filling those. Um, and be very aggressive about that. And it would take us. Yeah, I would imagine at the secondary, it would take us probably a good. Three to four weeks to 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 get those commitments in play. And so.
And then students would be dealing with new teachers and new staff.
Potentially.
Well, they're gonna be doing that anyway. For a lot of them, they've never met their teachers.
They've met them online. That's something.
Well, no, I mean, but like Matthew said, there's eleven percent that won't come back. There are some kids um who won't, I mean, that will have a new teacher.
Twenty five percent of the kids aren't coming back, right? We have seventy five, you said.
Well, if you have students, if you, if you have situations where um, where you have um. Those positions cannot be filled, that those the students are still entitled to. So they would, they would, there may be situations where they remain in distance learning with their current teacher. Until that position is is filled. Because if if we have a situation, I'm gonna talk about an elementary situation. So if we have a situation that occurred. Where. We had. All but two teachers. That um. That um. You know, two teachers that didn't feel comfortable coming back. And for whatever reason, we couldn't fill that. I'm thinking of the worst case scenario. Those two classes would need to remain in distance learning because they have to be provided their education. So. That's where the work comes in is is it's, 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 this is not, this is becomes very. Real when a date gets set because now people have to commit one way or the other so that we can, we can um. You know, make the appropriate. Staffing because our our responsibility is going to be to make sure that we have a staff member for every, for every, for every student population. And it can, and a stable staff member that's going to take it all the way through the rest of the the school year, so.
It becomes more, it becomes more of a gamble, more speculative when we're setting these dates. If you. Think about it from the staff perspective, that survey that went out talked about the resolution. It talked about. Here are the conditions that we need to 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 have in order to come back. That's what the staff were responding to. So. It changes the dynamic to say, okay, here, here's the date. We have an aspiration that we're gonna have, you're gonna have your, you're gonna get your vaccine, you're gonna get your second shot. And we. I think the dates that you're throwing out there, you're, you're, you're on the mark. Up, I'm cautiously optimistic, like Matty said. I'm cautiously optimistic as well.
You and me, Pollyanna.
Vaccines coming out, but I'm, I'm, I don't know if.
I don't, I don't think, I think it's gonna be a second. It'll be, it'll be a a lot of work. At the secondary level, a lot less at the the um elementary level, given the date that you, if you were, it it kind of depends on the date that you have, but the just the dates you were just throwing out. I don't think it's going to be a huge issue at the elementary level, um, only because I, um, I don't. In most scenarios, I don't see, I see everybody had, would have easily had an opportunity. To um, to be vaccinated. Now, I, you know, I don't know about at the secondary level. It's, there's, there's a lot of other pieces that are coming to plates. But um, so it would be, what it would mean for us is we would just have to. To get going on, on really determining who's, who's going to be here for the last. Eight weeks or so of school and who's, who's just not comfortable and they want to, um, they want to take a leave.
And they're, and they're.
This is what all districts have had to do around the state that have, that have been in this. This is not anything new. And we still might have people, we'll still, we'll still be in a situation, even if we're vaccinated, where we'll have folks that will have to make that decision.
So where does um? Where does distance learning? I mean, you're saying that the the teachers. That. Decide not to come back. Are choosing distant, is there a difference between that and choosing to do distance learning?
No, what I'm saying is that 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 um, in. If a, if a, if a student. Is. If a student is choosing to do. Um. Wants to come back. But we cannot find a classroom for them. A teacher, literally a a person to come in to teach that. They have a teacher right now. So what's happening? Well, that's the question we'd have to ask. What's happening? And maybe that individual is not feeling comfortable coming back.
And they don't have the option.
Model that that, in the model that is being recommended, that that we're moving into. Right? So in in that particular mod, in until we find somebody, we can't just have the student. Sitting at home. They have to receive instruction.
Yeah.
So the teacher, so the teacher would still be.
Right.
Doing what they're do, what they, what they, you know, they're doing every day. Um, and until we found somebody. I mean, those are kind of the realities, the real situations that we have to, we have to look at. It's literally case by case. On all of these, not as many of them at, at um elementary as secondary. But it it, you know, we'll have to. We've already set in motion plans for um different scenarios. And one of the scenarios, it's, it's what would happen. You know, with a significant number of of staff um. Not wanting to come back. And with enough time, we could deal with it. I'm not sure it's gonna be the best model. Certainly, but um, we can do that.
Hey, Gary, are the uh, vet, uh, is the distribution of vaccines under one B for educators? Is it further delineated by grade level? So that the younger, teachers of younger kids are going first?
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, me too.
That's it.
No, in no in that um. That. We are, it's, it's not, we're, it's, it's, it's not. We have a week, we have a week that we go, all of those individuals will be able to be covered in that week. They do not, they are not setting up appointments. In their system that way. If they, we would love to have them set it up that way. It's a little bit on the. So.
So we don't.
So all, all TK six would be eligible the same week, discuss an appointment.
Okay.
And it's not delineated any smaller than that. It's all TK six and then later, when it's secondary, it's all secondary.
Okay. That's why I think we should, if we're going to set a date, we should set a date for TK six. Because we can't. We can't say, okay, let's do the younger ones first. If there's no way to set up who gets vaccinated first.
Either, yeah, the reason for the stagger was not, was the, the only reason for the stagger was if we didn't have a, a. Projected date out. Because we wouldn't, if if you came back right now and said, we need to be back, we want to be back in two weeks. What we would say is we need to do TK. Through two first because we're gonna have to fill those jobs. We have to have. Pete, you know, we have to go through that progression. We have to have a thoughtful progression for how we're filling positions if people are taking leaves. And the most logical way to do that is to start with your younger ones and move. Move up the grade level change. So it might literally be if it was, if you were telling us to start next week or whatever. We'd, we'd start with TK and K and then first grade a couple of days later and then second grade until we, as long as we stayed ahead of. Staff, but with the um, with the date. Regardless of the date is a lot, with a date, it's not a big, is big of an issue as far as starting teak with a school site. Per se.
So we are like.
Our schools are not that big relative to elementary schools in California.
So if we have like an earlier start date, like let's say we say secondary comes back April twelfth, but elementary comes back before then, you're saying like the. We'll start moving on reopening, but then it sounds like, you know, the teachers want to be fully vaccinated. They might only have one vaccine, like. If they came back before spring break elementary, is there, do they have the option of taking like temporary leave until they get? Vaccinated, you know, like, okay, I'm a fifth grade teacher and and you're telling me I have to come back on March fifteenth, but I've only had one dose. Can I take leave? Until I have the second dose?
Yeah, yeah, so. Yes, they do. The 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 issue rather about a, the the issue related to, this is really just about the vaccinations. It's not about reopening. We can reopen. We could reopen with folks. Earlier than that. We know that. It's the issues, the issues related to the vaccinations.
Yeah, now, on that note, you know, several of our commentators said, hey, you know, take a look at, you know, the CDC says. Uh, we don't need vaccinations to reopen schools. Uh, they still recommend it. I want to know if they do recommend it.
They actually say prioritize it. And recommend it.
So, and I'm recognizing, you know. Based on what we're hearing on the supply of vaccinations, if we start on, if we, if our teachers start getting access to it on. Uh, March the eighth, four weeks out, they would be getting their second dose during spring. March the eighth, four weeks out, they would be getting their second dose during spring break, we are talking about an April 12th opening.
Yes. But I think that if you set a date, if you set a date, then at this point where everything is, if you go that way, you're, you're setting a date. I think you would, you would really run, run into some issues if you start pushing that, that start moving that goalpost. That's where the date, where as far as the dates go. Because you're either, you're either doing it conditions based or you're not, you know, as for the resolution.
So then let's look at a different scenario, maybe, or maybe we already have done it, I'm sorry, but if we keep it to not have a date and to vaccinations and we miraculously get all of our elementary school staff vaccinated and ready by, you know, March 15th or March 22nd. Does that automatically start? I mean, and we're all ready, we've got all the other conditions, does that start school?
Hold on, let me.
Because if we don't have, I mean, it could be that they get vaccinated next week, that they start that vaccination.
It's not possible for that mathematically. You're, you're still looking at, you're still looking at April, you're still looking at April 12th either way. Because.
I propose we set April 12th for elementary and April, and the following week, April 19th for secondary. What do you guys think about those?
I don't think I got answers to my question earlier about the, about the leave. If that's, I just want to know what the option.
He said that they could, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, they can take.
Yeah, they can. Yeah.
But then we would have to fill those positions.
With long-term subs probably.
We would.
I mean, because I don't want anyone coming back before they're comfortable, but if parents are willing to send their kids back, even if it's with like a short-term sub, that's at least something I just at least want to weigh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want staff to feel like they have to come back before two vaccines. So I like, I like what you're, the idea that you're going for, Joanne, I just don't know how everyone, what, what would that look like and how feasible is that? We don't, we don't know how many teachers would come back after one.
So first of all, assuming, assuming we can find that many.
Right.
Subs. And I think you just need to think about how, are we, we're arguing over a week or two, I mean, we've been out, you know, I want to get students back, I want my own kids back, we want to get kids back, I understand that, but we also have to weigh, you know, them going back with their teacher, with their, their own teachers, when it's safe to do so. It's gonna be a, this is gonna be, it's already me a logistical, logistically challenging.
And we know we're already gonna have to most likely find forty-five to fifty or more subs, so, I mean, we're gonna turn around immediately and start recruiting for term subs, we're gonna have to, so we're, we're already moving in that direction.
Our resolution doesn't address if we're in red because we never expected to get there before vaccinations.
We heard.
But it looks like we are gonna get there.
Well, it does, it addresses the number of cases.
Yeah.
Which is the main, yeah.
Yeah, it says under twenty-five, which is still purple, but.
Well, no, that's, but it says seven.
Oh, for secondary, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you're right. But I'm, I'm worried about, you know, the likelihood that we're gonna be in red waiting for a vaccine. And that's time that we can be in school.
Well, if you figure they're gonna be starting vaccinations probably at the same time that we reach red. It just feels like, you know, like somebody hadn't, one of our speakers, you know, we're starting the process. And, you know, it could have been that we could have started at the end of March, at least with TK through six, but we have a spring break and then we have all these emergency days, maybe we could move the emergency days. You know, I mean, we don't need them this year. Put them at the end of the year or something and then start school a little bit earlier for TK through six, when, when, if we are gonna be in the red, they will most likely be vaccinated if they come back, what is it, the eighth? Close enough.
But then we have to, then we're looking at changing the calendar and I don't, I don't know.
Do that.
I don't, well.
Have to talk with all the unions.
Yeah, and everybody would have to vote and it would be, I think that would be a nightmare.
Change in working condition.
It's, it, it is.
Yeah.
It's possible that, that in, in that scenario that, that, I'm counting it out, it's possible that they could be through both their, their series. We're, you know, I mean, we're being told that we're, here's, we're being told that we're gonna flip flop, which means that the C and the D groups will be going first at the secondary level, not the A and the B groups. So in that scenario, I'm just, I mean, and it, it is, it's a speculation to some extent. That they would be beginning their, their, their series. Twelve, they would be getting their series sometime around the fifteenth of March. But you really have to look at the nineteenth of March because that's the Friday, so then if you go twenty-eight days from, twenty-eight days from that, then you get to the sixteenth of April. As the twenty-eighth day for the last, the last Friday group. So you're in that ballpark in that. It just really comes down to a question of how critical is, is that in your minds, that the vaccination piece? And you're, you've heard, you've heard two different things on that. And yeah, that's what you're trying, that's, that's, that's the issue, the issue is you've heard some very real concerns from teachers and, and other educators about that. You've also heard folks that have cited that CDC and C and California Public Health do not say that vaccinations are, are a contingency, a contingent on a return to a school. That there are other measures that need to be in place for, for schools to return. Because obviously there were a lot of schools that returned in August, Sep- September, August, I mean, September, October, November with no vaccination, so. We've been in deep purple, there's a lot of other issues.
Yeah, exactly, but I just wanted to throw out there also that I read a couple of that Long Beach Unified, which is not a small district. Actually, it's a city, I guess it's part of LA County. But it prioritized its teachers and staff for vaccinations in January. And they just announced plans, so they, they've been vaccinating their staff. That they're reopening to the youngest students, March 29th. And then San Diego just published that they're going to reopen April 12th. I couldn't find in the article if they were staggering it at all.
Yeah.
But they were opening April 12th contingent on all teachers, all staff being vaccinated and getting to the red tier, which isn't even necessary in California anymore for, for elementary. So I just wanted to throw it out there that even, even districts that have been giving vaccinations, they're still prioritizing vaccinations and, and they're still opening later, even if they're vaccinated, like in Long Beach.
Well, I think one thing that, I think only one person, only one commenter mentioned that I've been wanting to up is these new variants, you know?
Right.
Right here, they're studying them at UCSF. I mean, I don't want to always be like, oh, we don't know what the virus is gonna do, but at least a vaccine.
Yeah.
Can help, yeah, create the antibodies to fight the thing.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think that if the resolution as it is already has us in targeted dates that we would want to try to target, I think changing the language just makes it more confusing.
It sounds like it, huh?
Well, so you're saying, don't put dates because it's confusing, I don't understand, Caitlin.
No, I'm just saying, don't change the resolution, as soon as we can announce dates, we should announce dates, but don't put dates in a resolution. That's my, what I'm saying.
I, I think we need to, because like the secondary counselors, they have to start master scheduling, we have to at least give like a target date for teachers and families and our district staff.
I'm fine with a target date, but I like the way San Diego did it of, that's our target date, but yeah, vaccines aren't.
I just think we need to make a decision, I mean, we're like wandering around.
If we, if we do it like that, like we could have April 12th contingent
Right.
on all teachers being vaccinated.
But we don't know if all teachers are going to be vaccinated, we won't know who's vaccinated. We don't, we don't have that information, so to say.
We'll have the information that we need, which is, which is, you know, what I will, what what we will be gathering information on is were our, did our teachers have access to sign up and there were slots available for them? We know that we'll be able to find that information out related to that.
When the C cohort has their week to go.
We may very well also be, I mean, down the road, depending on the situation, we may very well be, be also offering other re, other resources, places to go for vaccinations. Because they've been provided to us.
CVS, Walgreens.
Matthew, maybe you can speak to it, obviously, we can't require teachers to have vaccines, no one here is suggesting that, but are, I mean, are we gonna be asking teachers if they're vaccinated or not, or what stages they're in, how does that work?
Well, I think, I think we're missing the point, the, the resolution, I think the vast majority of our teachers and staff are gonna get vaccinated. SCO estimated at eighty percent, I think it's gonna be even higher than that, but we're not gonna ask our staff, did you get vaccinated or not, it's, did you have the opportunity to get a vaccination? That's a personal choice, you want to get a vaccine or not, that's a personal choice, we're saying, here's an opportunity, you have an opportunity to get vaccinated. You don't believe in vaccinations, okay, that's fine, we're still moving forward, you were given an opportunity, you didn't take it, we're, we're reopening school, you had most of our teachers will get our back, will get a vaccination in our staff. So that's really what we're talking about, we know what SCO is gonna provide us with a week. Say, here's when cohort C Peddled Mace schools, you sign up, you've got all the slots that you need. We sign our teachers up, they get the first shot, next, you know, we're gonna have a timeline that, that's gonna be pretty clear.
Right.
When, when the supply is there, that's the unknown, we, when the supply is there, we will know when they've been given an opportunity to get the vaccine.
And right now, the signal is March eighth, the week of March eighth.
That's what we're hearing, but yes.
Which would give elementary teachers, if we do the 12th.
Yeah, because we were B, they're, they're, they were, they wanted to do group B. This last week, they were not able to do B, which means next week will be B, the following week will be C and D together. And then they will start that process over and then they will bring in the secondary folks to do that. Now, it might be that the secondary, they may just elect to do to do C and D at the same time at secondary, which would move us forward a week. But we don't, we just don't know, I mean, we, we can't give a a reliable date because we're not provided any dates.
Okay, so so let's say we keep the resolution the way it is. What kind of notice do parents get? I mean, and teachers in terms of, you know, at what point can we tell them when they're gonna come back?
I think we should decide that tonight.
No, 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 well, yeah, but I'm, I'm asking a, a question.
Before, before, how was that gonna work?
Yeah, like if we kept the resolution the way that it is.
The way that it was intended on working was that SCO was assuming that they were going to be getting their supplies, their, and they were able to administer. It's really a question of, of, it was not a question of supplies at that time. It was a question of, do you have enough, how many shots can you get done with the people that you have working the, working the vaccination clinic? And they were doing a ramped up model that by the week, by week three, they would be fully function, a hundred percent capacity. So weeks four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 would all be fully running, so we could have pretty safely been able to say, okay, after our folks, because we weren't in weeks one and two, we were a week three group, that we could set a ti- a date and say, it looks like it's going to be this date. And we would send that out to families because, I mean, they're, they're, you know, the, the turnaround, that's gonna be in, you know, we, we were gonna be able to set, set a, not even an aspirational date with pretty, pretty strong level of confidence, as long as we were getting the vaccinations in that with, they were, they, they've been able to, to deliver them and distribute them to, to different, you know, to the population. And they seem to have that worked out. The issue is not bodies, it's now, it's just supply chain. So because the supply chain is so up and down.
Okay, so I guess my question is, at this point, at what point do we, I mean, how much time? So do the, the parents have a week, are we gonna give them a week before, after the both vaccinations, I mean, if we leave the resolution the way it's written?
Probably.
Figure out, huh?
Probably two weeks' notice.
At least.
Okay, so if they don't.
Wouldn't it be four because, you know, the, because the vaccines are four weeks apart, while the Moderna is.
Well, no, what, what it would be is for us, it would be four, we would be staffing that way. But for parents, we'd really know that Friday before, because what happens is okay, if you're four weeks out, okay, you're gonna be coming back in the fourth week. When you get through the, we would want to see they got through the first week and they got their doses for the second week. Once they, if they had their doses for the second week, it could probably be early, so about two and a half weeks. Then we would know because we, now all we're waiting for is two additional variables, whether they're getting doses on the third week and getting doses in our week. And so it's about for, for, for families, but, but I'm not sure that that's yeah, I mean, they, yeah, I mean, folks want to know and anything short of that is not gonna be, we know that that's not gonna be, they're not gonna be happy with that.
I think what, I think what you're saying to, to answer Maddie's question is i- if we get the supplies of the week of the eighth as expected, parents could be notified, we could expect to be notifying teachers the following week of the fifteenth of an opening date of April 12th.
Well, what's different about our, what, what's, what's unique about our schedule is we have spring break, so they would know before spring break.
Right.
Okay, that was my question, good.
Yeah.
Okay, so they would know before spring break.
Right.
I don't really want to bring any kids back later than April 12th, that's just how I'm feeling right now and I, and we brought this back, like it's on the agenda to review recent data and information and the, like, we have, what's changed since we first passed this is the vaccines, we have no idea what's going on with vaccines now, like none, really, I mean, we have some assurances, but I mean, things change all the time. Another thing that's changed is the tiers are moving closer to the red and we need to put dates out there, so I, I, I don't want to leave the resolution as it is because again, we are supposed to be reviewing it in light of the new information that we have. So I'll say that and I don't want to bring any kids back later than April 12th.
I'm with Joanna. And I think we should make, we should, we can keep talking for hours, but I think we need to make a decision and.
So y'all are saying April 12th with no contingencies related to the vaccine?
Well, I think April 12th for elementary especially, I think they will have their vaccines by then.
I think April 12th in the hopes of, because we can say April 12th, and then again, there could be another hurricane, or we could have an earthquake, or something will happen that could push back the vaccine. The vaccines, we thought, right? Okay, maybe we can't count on the health program, maybe we can count on SCO, and like SCO can't even assure them. So I feel like the vaccines have become too much of an unknown. I do want the teachers to get vaccinated. I want to go back at least when they have at least one dose, preferably two. Knowing that, like, also weighing that with the fact that we have to put a date out there, like, we need to give our district personnel, our parents, our teachers a heads up on, okay, this is the target date. Like, here's our light at the end of the tunnel. It's this date, not, well, if you get vaccinations or not, because that keeps changing. I mean, even Newsom today, I was watching the press conference, I was at work, and, you know, he's sitting up there arguing with his own assembly people, like, we don't even know what, like, Gary was saying, in two weeks, they could be like, you're going back April 15th, period. So I think if we're ahead of that, that's just going to make everything just go so much smoother.
So do you want to bring everybody back on April 12th?
I say we stagger the 12th and then the 19th for secondary. That's my.
I was thinking earlier for elementary and the 12th for.
Secondary?
Secondary, like it's maybe the week before spring break, hoping at least one dose. I know that that's not preferable, but I just feel like there's just so many unknowns. I want to make the best decision possible. And again, we're not at 40 per 100,000. We're at, what are we at, 13 or 14 now? And let's hope it doesn't go back.
14.
We're at 14.
Yeah, it went up.
By point two, it was 13. Yeah.
No, I hear you.
That's my 15 cents.
No, I hear you. I, I was thinking that I've been, this is, that my, I've changed my feelings regularly about this.
Just FYI, spring break for the year round starts the 24th.
Of March?
Of March, so.
Is that a Wednesday, Chris?
It's a Wednesday.
And Chris, when do they go back?
The same time, the 12th. They have a two and a half week spring break, so they only have Monday and Tuesday of that week. So just, I don't know if that factors in or makes any difference in what you guys are talking about, but Hanger Grove and Cherry Valley, that week Joanna would only be Monday, Tuesday.
If it was the, if you were saying that, that it was, everybody needed to be back by the 12th, then we would have, we would be, we would be looking at staggering and bringing them back for part, at least part of the week prior to spring break. If it is after that, then we would be, we'd be, we, it would be the, the easiest thing to do would be to stagger and go the, you know, successive weeks.
So are we looking at like March 24th, which would be a couple of days before spring break for the elementaries and then?
So knowing.
He's saying 22nd.
Because.
Oh, okay.
You wouldn't be, wouldn't be doing that. So, but they're on a different scheduling.
Yeah.
Different schedule anyways, but I mean.
I could go with, I'm, I'm feeling comfortable with Ellen's suggestion, the 12th for elementary and the 19th with secondary. I think that gives us the most opportunity for, to get the vaccine. Yeah.
Joanna, what do you think?
So you said the 12th for elementary, 19th for secondary? Is that what you, Sheldon, are saying?
That's what Ellen suggested.
Okay. What do you guys think, Maddie and Caitlin? I mean, I've said what I think. I think the 22nd for elementary, the 12th for secondary.
I could go with that as well.
Girl, you gotta decide. It's almost midnight.
I know, and.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't want.
I'm just kidding, Alan. Take your time, take your time.
I, I'm not going to get pressured into this.
No, I was joking. Sorry. You guys don't know my sense of humor.
I don't want people to think that we're not reviewing and listening carefully to everything that they're saying. I just still, I know it sucks, and I know that we can't control the vaccines, but that doesn't, that, that doesn't change it for me. I mean,
Yeah.
I, I know more than a lot of people realize about students' mental health, like, I've been a student in these schools recently. I suffer from anxiety and depression. Mine has also gotten worse because of the pandemic. As a separate item, I definitely want to be talking more and more about how we can support students' mental health and increase funding and do different things, but it's not like everyone's mental health is magically going to be better the day we come back on campus. So much more is going to need to be done, and regardless of if we're on campus or not. So I, I just am still really attached to the opportunity to have a full vaccination series.
Maddie?
As a parent, I totally understand. I mean, the trauma of the past year has hit everybody. As a teacher, I totally understand. I mean, I understand all sides of this. And I'm really struggling, and I've struggled back and forth for days now because I totally believe in what Caitlin has just said. That's where my heart is. But that uncertainty just, I, I, I just think that that uncertainty is just going to tear us apart. That's what my concern is.
Which, which part of the uncertainty?
Not having a date.
Of the existing resolution.
Of not having a date, you said?
So you agree?
So like having not, like having the existing resolution is it's, it's the uncertainty in it. I think that we can almost certainly, we, I don't know whether we can put it in the resolution. I don't think we can. If we have a date, it's either a date or vaccinations, and that's a horrible choice. But if we do the 12th.
We should not have to be making, but.
Right, but unfortunately, we are. So my mind is to go later. The 12th and the 19th. Then again, I can also see the benefits of bringing back elementary because, but you know, it's just, it's just a couple of days, and then we're, then we have two weeks off, unfortunately. It just happens that the timing is terrible.
It could even be like the little ones might need, sorry.
You know, I could see like maybe just having the little ones come back that week.
Yeah, no, so I was just going to say, I know.
Just have that, like, add that to the resolution and then have the bulk, then the rest of them come back.
On the 12th?
Jason's like, what? It might make it harder for him, but if we come back, just the, the part of the week, you know, for the 22nd, just like as an intro, like a orientation type thing, just so the kids get used to, you need to have your mask on. We're going to stand. Here's how your mom and dad are going to drop you off. Just, just so we can get the ball rolling so that it is staggered still.
I, I could go for that.
If you were looking, if you were looking at that, it would be, you know, it'd probably be the, like the 23rd.
For TK, TK through two or?
Utilize, there would be, there would be some time that we need, we would utilize for the, for the teachers in the room on the 22nd. We have to work through that.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little lost. So are you talking about just bringing TK through two back a few days before spring break? And then TK through six, and then add three through six on the Monday, the 12th?
Yeah.
Is that what you meant, Maddie?
Well, I thought that, yeah, I thought that's good.
Is that Joanna? Is that what you're saying too?
No, but if we.
I thought that's what you said.
Oh, sorry, I called them all.
Elementary back.
Yeah.
Oh, you want all of them back?
But I mean, if that makes. TK two, and then I guess the 12th, the elementary, like you guys had proposed, and then secondary, the 19th.
I say we vote.
Well, you have to do a.
Don't have a motion.
Caitlin, what?
You look unhappy.
I am unhappy.
I think we're all unhappy.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's happy. I, I will only, I will only vote for dates if the contingency of vaccines is still attached. Sorry.
It's okay.
You don't have to apologize.
How about a, how about a contingency of having the first dose? Can we put that in there?
I don't, I don't know. I don't.
Because that covers TK through two will almost certainly have at least their first dose. And then even by the 19th, the, the secondary will have their first dose.
Right, and so then the contingency doesn't even matter because it'll all be perfect and everything will be fine, and we'll start April 12th. Like, like, in what should happen, April 12th is great and is perfect. I'm not comfortable removing the contingency of vaccines personally, so that's where I'm at.
I don't blame you.
I would much rather prefer the teachers were fully vaccinated before we go back, but I don't see how we can do vaccines and, and a start date. Like, I don't see how those two things can happen at this point, just because we can say the 12th, right, and we get ready to go, and then there's something that happens and we just don't have them. I just, I don't have faith in the, the system right now that they are going to prioritize and get us our vaccines, or there won't be a natural disaster or something, because it should have already happened.
No, I absolutely, a million percent agree with you, which is why I feel the need to stick with the vaccine contingency. Anyone that knows me knows that the more stressed I am, the bigger my hair gets. So I, you know, it's not, I'm not.
So how?
So, so, while you chew on that.
I mean, we're not a jury. We don't all have to agree, but I'm, I'm trying to be open, but.
What, what, Gary, what's? Do we have?
You also have a board meeting in two weeks. You could.
Do we, so do we have to, in order to vote on this, if we were going to vote, would we have to just move something like, I, I move.
What would happen would be.
Is the.
If you, yeah, you would go through and you would, you would strike, you would strike certain pieces out if you were making changes, and then you would replace it with other pieces. I don't think, I, I, I don't think that, I think you, I, I would not normally say this, but I do think you need to make a decision one way or the other, because you cannot go through meeting, another, another set of meeting like this. Can't do it. I've, I've, I've watched all of you beat yourself up on this for, for a couple of weeks. It's hard to watch. You know, we're all angry, I think, right now. We're not asking the right question. As a community, we're not asking the right question. The question that should be, being asked right now is, why is the only county that's still in purple not getting vaccinations first?
Yeah.
Question. That's the question that people, nobody's asking that question. And there's an answer, there, there is an answer to it, but because it, it is, it is about the socio-political structure that's set up in California. And your legislatures will tell you that privately as well. So now, that being said, I think that you know, everybody's feeling the, you know, that, that, that there's, things are moving very quickly and moving quickly. I, I think they're positive, but as they move positive, it's making it more difficult to, on this one. I just think you're going to have to come to some, some type of a, something that you can, you guys can all live with. And it's okay if you, if, if you're not all going to agree on it, but you're all going to stay a team on it, you know, regardless, and you've, you've gone through the process. There's no, no perfect answer on this. We'll do whatever you want to do. There's pros and cons with everything. We do, we'd only, the, the only piece that we would, that we would recommend is some element of a stagger as it relates to elementary and secondary. That would be the one, that would be the one piece, is not, not all. Because we just don't know how many kids will be coming back and what implications that has for transportation as well as, you know, the hiring piece.
Well, I, I don't know how to say this, but I suggest or move that we start TK through two on March 23rd. We add three through six on the 12th, and then we do secondary on the 19th.
Is that, is that, are you making a motion?
Did I?
Is that in replacement of any existing language?
Yeah, let me, can I share a screen?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, yeah, you should be able to. Let me know if you can't.
I, I think I'm keeping track of what people are saying. Okay, so I think if we want to set dates, and that's if, then I think we have to strike this contingency number three under the, the first resolve.
Well, definitely access an opportunity which they will have.
Exactly.
But it says the whole series.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, it does.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
We could strike that.
Things are all blurry right now for me.
If we want to set dates, I think we have to strike item three here. And then under the second set of resolves, we, we place the dates that we're interested in, instead of saying four weeks after whatever, we just say the dates that we're interested.
Oh, I see how it works.
I think that's great, Sheldon.
That won't solve, that'll, that'll be, you'll have to resolve the issue related to, could you slide up, Sheldon, on that?
Sure.
You'll have to resolve the issue of number one up, up above because that's not resolved down below.
Oh, that's move, that's the secondary, or moving into red for secondary.
Well, isn't that?
Well, no, no, it's not that. It's the, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's below that. It's, you're going to have to resolve some language on number one underneath. It's the co, the cohort piece.
The cohort piece.
Here, here.
Yeah.
Well, that's just, oh, yeah, it's, it's only by vaccine. It's only number three.
No, it's.
It's only.
Is, is the cohort piece?
The cohort piece.
Is the cohort piece following seven through 12, or is it following?
Yeah.
Three through six?
Okay.
That's the. That's the question.
I thought we, it was going to be for the, for special ed and, um, ELS, I thought it was going to be through 12, including secondary.
Say that again.
I thought that, um, when we've been talking about, we've been talking about TK through six and the auxiliaries, which I thought was.
Right, but you were talking TK through six and now you staggered it. So where does it, where does it go? Does it go into the TK through two or does it go into three through six?
I think it should go in the three through six because that would give those special ed teachers a little bit longer. Does that, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's just that we'd have to be, you would, you would want to, to put a date there that would Matt, if that, if that was the case, you'd put the date that was, that, that mirrored what other start date you want to marry it to.
I'd like to marry it to the 12th. Because I, you know, I heard loud and clear that there's a lot of issues in special ed classes. And so I would like to have that extra two weeks. For them to at least get one vaccine. Preferably two.
Well, I know they are prioritized.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's fine with me. It sounds fine. It's just to take, because you just have to take out that it's now the only condition is that they, they're fully vaccinated. We could leave it in there.
Would it join again?
I don't know. I don't see, uh, or Caitlin.
Oh, she's. They're here. They're just in the next row.
Yeah.
I'm very confused about what the heck is on the table, if we're being honest.
So I, 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 I think I tracked it, but let me, let me see. Um, what I tracked was that three would be struck. That that going below that establishment of instructional cohorts cohort guidance for identified students with moderate to severe disabilities in pre-identified special ed classes and English learners and identified ELD coursework. Would would reopen for, for, for hybrid learning on, um, April 12th. And then going down below, it start striking out what Sheldon has already highlighted. Would say, uh, for TK K1 and two would be, um, February.
March.
March 23rd. March 23rd.
That's today.
And then second grade would be April 12th and number three, the standard grade seven through 12 would be the 19th of April.
Just spreading it down, not endorsing anything, I'm just writing it down. All right, I think I got, I think I heard what Ellen proposed, strike three. Um, this, uh, the instructional cohorts on April 12th. K12, one, two, March 22. Is that correct? 22. I heard somebody say 23, which is a Tuesday.
It's, um, let me look. It would be March 23.
23.
23.
A Tuesday.
Then the year round wouldn't be able to go back except for just a day.
Well, it's just a matter of, 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 um, I mean, I think you're going to want it, I think we're going to provide them some opportunity to, to do, um, to at least get into their, their classroom for a day. Which means they would give them an asymptomatic assignment. Asymptomatic. Asynchronous.
We are tired.
On Monday.
Sorry, why, why Tuesday and not Monday and the following?
Well, it would, you could do it Monday too, and, and, but that would, you still would need to give them time to, to get into their classroom.
That gives them Monday as a workday?
No, it's not a workday. It's got to be a school day, but it has to be asynchronous.
Hey Gary, why not do that at the end of the prior week?
You could do it at the end of the prior week. You could do it on the, you could do it on the, um, the 19th, March 19th, and you could start them on the 22nd. And that would give, that would give a couple of days for the, for the, um,
The year rounds.
The year rounds to come in. You could do that. So yes.
So does that have to be put in there?
No, it doesn't have to be put in there. We would just.
That's just, that's just something.
On, on making sure that that happened.
This is basically what I was thinking about like two weeks ago and then got rid of and then came back and then got rid of.
Which is the other reason why you probably wouldn't want to start. If you, if, if you were going to go this way, it's probably the other, other reason why you wouldn't want to start on the, the 12th for seven through 12 because you would want to give them the same amount of time, probably that Friday before they started on the 19th. Does that make sense?
So can we move this into, in, for a vote or?
You.
The motion.
I think you just proposed to amend, didn't you, Ellen?
Yes.
And, and have I accurately, um, have I, uh, marked what you want to amend?
Yes.
Can you hover over your marks again, just so I can see them?
Yeah, so we're Ellen's move to strike number three up here. You see my cursor?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Strike number three up here, uh, uh, under this, uh, further resolve, establish the date of April 12th. And then under these three resolves, establish dates of March 22 for TK through two. Um, April 12th for three through six, April 19th for secondary.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's what she has moved. I guess we're looking for a second.
We have a second. I will second. So. Oh, go ahead, Sheldon.
I, I just want to, I mean, I just want to acknowledge that, the, that two, I mean, it's just our spring break is smack in the middle of that. And what that, um, you know, that in itself will create tensions among the teaching staff.
That alone is kind of what's pushing it into April, which we can't get around, no matter any of this.
Yep.
And I hear that and I, but I also, I mean, just for me personally, again, I'm just one vote. I don't want to keep pushing the secondary kids back. Especially when we heard two seniors talk, they missed the end of, and I know, and I.
But they're not going to end, they're not going to miss the end. They'll be back. It's not, it's not going to be.
But, but if we're doing this dagger, it'll be, it'll be 12th, 19th, 26th. It's just, it just feels so, just feels so late. That's just how I feel. That's a, and I.
Well, right now what's proposed is the 22nd or 23rd, the 12th and the 19th. Everything according to this proposal would be well before the 26th.
Yeah. Did you?
I'm just saying regardless of whether vaccine or no vaccine or whatever, unfortunately, at this point in year, a lot of kids are going to be starting after spring break. That was literally all I was trying to say. But spring break is so big.
But that also provides time for teachers to get their second vaccine.
Yeah, I'm not.
Did you get us, did you second Joanna?
Yeah, she did.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm. I'm, I, I, I think I'm favoring it 12, 19, you know, two, two tier after spring break, um, start, you know?
Like a K6 12? I'm sorry, K6 on the 12th and then, I, okay.
And then, then, uh, secondary on the 19th. Just to, just for the sake of equity of, um, of opportunity to get the second vaccine, I'm worried, you know, of the signal we're sending of, you know, the, the TK, uh, two teachers only have the opportunity to get one vaccine when the rest of them will get the opportunity for like two.
Okay, so I move to revise.
And revise your motion?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I'm just trying to move it forward here.
I appreciate.
That's good. Thank you.
I move to revise the, uh,
The revision?
The revision and strike the March 22nd and make and have TK through six and the auxiliaries on April 12th and secondary on April 19th.
Which is what we are hoping for with our current resolution.
Oh, is there a second to the revision?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maddie. Shall we vote?
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
I.
I.
I. Opposed?
Nah.
Okay. All right.
Good work. Good work, folks. I mean, it's.
Oh, God.
We still gotta, we, that, we're not done. As revised, and I have one more revision. We have one more revision because I would like us not to get sued. So I move to write, to cross out approved and write authorized so that technically we are only talking about vaccines that are authorized, not approved by the FDA. Okay, if that language is even still in there.
See that again?
Oh, no, we took it out.
Oh, yeah. Never mind. It's, doesn't, it's, it's, it's a moot point.
Yes. So we're.
So Cait, Caitlin, I was the no vote.
I know, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm not, I don't.
We've all been a no at some point.
Yeah, I was a no.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not worried about me.
Okay, so are we done?
No, we are not done.
The resolution.
I thought.
We have more after that too, Ellen.
Well, we only, you only, you all just voted on the amendment on the resolution. So now we have to vote on the resolution.
Okay.
The resolution's already was passed.
It's already done.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, moving on. Okay?
Future business.
So, so.
Oh, okay.
You there, you, I think you just kind of gave us our future business. It's going to be, um, crazy, but what I would say is this, um, we will, we will set a, um, now that we have some dates, um, we'll give folks some adequate notice, um, community. Um, and we'll set a Q and A for folks, um, in the next, um, within the next week, our goal would be to do that, um, particularly so that we can. It's one thing communicating out, um, updates, written updates, but it's a whole nother thing when you have an interaction. I think there's just a lot of, of interactive questions that we can try to answer. The problem, the problem that folks, um, I think that the challenge is there's a lot of questions that can't be answered because the nature of the way the question is asked is, so why did you do this? Why did you do that? When the why is not Caitlin or Joanna or Maddie, it's a collective decision. So you have, you, you know, I, I encourage people to, we record these things for a reason. Watch, watch the last three hours and you'll understand all of the things that were discussed and talked about. We, you know, but we'll do our very best to go over reopening conditions for, um, for parents. I know Matthew will, will, will be, you know, um, moving fairly quickly on, um, issues related to personnel. But, um, we can work with this. We'll, we'll do, we'll do what we need to do.
Do we, do you, um, I don't know if everyone's still awake because do you want to set a date now for like a forum?
So, no, it's, I, I would, I, I would recommend that it's just with cabinet. It's just now it's.
Right, right. But that's what I'm saying, you, you guys, I say you guys.
Oh, um, no, I'll talk to, I have a cabinet meeting with them tomorrow. I'll talk to them then. I doubt that, and not everybody's on that I need to talk to, so.
I appreciate you doing that, Gary, because, um, I think, you know, Brian and Jason and Cliff, you know, the presentation that they gave earlier, I think, um, people had not heard the information, um, and I think it answered a lot of questions and hopefully can answer the rest of them.
Yeah, we had it, we had a 30 minute meeting and then we stayed on for an hour and a half and answered every question we could and it was really helpful. So I, I think it's going to be a good thing.
The, um, when we was, when we started down the process with, um, when we started down the process with Zoom and if you recall, um, we were doing what many districts still are doing, which is people had to submit their, their, um, their comments and we, we read the comments. In fact, I just watched, sat through a three and a half hour board meeting a couple of nights ago if for my son's school district and they read every single comment. Um, and I get why we, we, we went away from that because hearing voices is important. And we've always prided ourselves on, and this is, this is, you know, well before me, but I've seen it all the way through my tenure that people can be really respectful and disagree. And, and there's a, you know, one of the beauties of, of public comment is you can be pretty tough and you can be critical, but you can also be respectful. And I have to tell you, I'm, I'm personally, I'm, I'm questioning that decision right now about whether that's a good decision to not, um, reinstate people having to write their comments. Because, um, there were just some things that, that others are not privy to. You are, that people put in the chat box this tonight that were just unacceptable by anyone's behavior. Um, and so I, I would ask you to think about that. And, um, I think that we're, it was right, it's still the right decision to have people, um, you know, um, to have that interactive dialogue is a good thing, but, um, we're not, it's not a good place right now. The, 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 the level of, um, just rancor and vitriol. And that's disappointing because I think that we all, you know, we're all here for, none of you are getting paid to do this. And you're doing your very, very best. And, um, so I thank you for the work and I know that the community thanks you for this work because you have, you know, you represent the community. You were, you were elected by the community, you represent the community and um, you're, you're making the best decision that you made tonight based for you. So thank you for that. But we will be bringing back some things obviously on for future business related to, um, some diversity, recruitment, hiring pieces, um, coming up. This next board meeting is going to be pretty stacked because we you recall that we actually didn't have students of the month that usually come, we had to push them back so that this 11:49 meeting did not become a 12:25 meeting. So we will have a double students of the month at the next board meeting.
That's my favorite part anyway, so I don't mind.
Yeah.
And we have a near few, before we're back in person, can we have a discussion item, maybe action items around student mental health and, you know, what, what funding isn't, is available? What, like what are our MFTs seeing? Anything along those lines?
How about we do something related to, um, with our MFTs? They can come and present about how they're deploying.
That would be great.
As we come back. Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can do that. I think that'd be really, really, um, we may actually involve them in our, um, in our, um, our interactive meeting webinar. our interactive meeting webinar. So we're really well represented. We do need to do, just remember, Joanna, before we close, we need to, we need to report out on closed session.
Closed session? When was that?
I was gonna say it was yesterday, but.
Close, close.
Okay, so we talked about future business, I'll sign the papers tomorrow, Michelle. We don't need to go back to closed session, and we have nothing to report out of closed session. Right?
We do. We have to report, we have to report a, our, our resolution for, for, that we have our annual resolution. Temporary employees, and it was a, it was a five to nothing vote to, to approve the resolution, which is a requirement we have to do every year.
So how do we?
He reported it.
Recorded it out.
I just reported it.
Okay, so I'm gonna adjourn the meeting, Caitlin, do you have the gavel?
Thank you.
No, it's in my bedroom.
Okay, well.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work.
Good night.
Good night.